All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm sorry? Okay. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be removed for our discussion? Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Ms. Seguino, taken by Commissioner and Judge, and any discussion on the agenda? Commissioner Wick.
Yeah, two things, one a comment and one a motion. I'll just state the comment first. It's not clear to me in Section 12, Executive Session, what the subject is, and I think we need to state that more clearly if indeed we're intending to deliberate upon and then potentially approve the superintendent's contract and/or compensation, which is what the Front Porch Forum said we were going to be doing tonight. So I'm a little concerned, just legally speaking, that we may not have the power to do that, but I'll certainly defer to the board's attorney on that question. That would be my concern.
Sure. I think our attorney's already answered that, and you were on copy on that email.
If so, I haven't seen it, so I'll check.
Okay. And based on that, we have the ability to cure, and so in that cure, we will get proper wording for all the different instances that would be applied for this wording from now on. So I'll have that for the next board meeting. We'll have all the proper wording. That would be the declaration for the different points of all the personnel matters and all that, exactly what we can put in there, what we can't. But that would be the cure for it, and I'll pursue that by having that by the next meeting.
Fair enough. And so my motion would be to, similar to two meetings ago, add board reflection in after public comment.
You know what? You don't have to. It was a mistake on the agenda, so I'll just make it clear that that's supposed to be on here anyways.
Oh.
And I apologize, I didn't pass that on to you. We did vote on that, and we just didn't get back to you. So that's going to be considered there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Give me one second to take a note. Brittany, would you mind taking a note that we need to get from Joe, the proper wording for the different instances, for an announcement of a motion for the different things under executive session? Thank you. I know I might just forget it, so I want to make sure. And the deliverable on that would be the next board meeting. We would have that list. Okay? Thank you. Anything else to discuss on the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda, as stated with the slight correction that has to be on there, based on the last meeting, we voted on adding the board reflections. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. Staying up with us? You good?
Yeah, she's okay. She's taking notes. Thanks.
You good? We'll now welcome comments and questions from the public.
Fran Brock.
And when you come up, whoever's going to come up, if you haven't done this before, we have two minutes per person to come up and talk. We ask that you only take the two minutes, because that way it gives everybody else time to speak on what might be a different subject. Okay? Commissioner Curry will keep times on that. She'll let you know when there's 30 seconds left out of the two minutes, and then she'll let you know when you're at the two-minute point. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening. I continue to be Fran Brock, President of the Burlington Education Association and a history teacher at BHS. Tonight, in the short two-minute window, I want to offer some concerns on behalf of Burlington's teachers and paraeducators. As you know, contract talks regarding the paraeducator contract have moved to the fact-finder stage. I hope the board will take this opportunity to respectfully consider the findings when they are offered, so this contract can be settled. As for the teachers' contract, it seems we are very close to signing off on it. I certainly look forward to having a master contract in place, so teachers finally can receive their full salaries, and administrators and teachers finally are working from a set of constants. It will make operations of the schools more efficient and effective when we all know the agreed-upon rules of the game. I'm concerned that changes in the school schedule for the balance of the school year cuts into the amount of time teachers, particularly at the elementary school level, will have for family meetings in March. While the superintendent has instructed building principals to work out the schedules, a district-wide policy or oversight may be needed to ensure fair, balanced, and equal opportunity across the district. Teachers are concerned that the decision to reduce conference time is shortchanging families who need these conferences to better understand educational expectations and services and to better support their children. On another note, teachers are aware the school board is evaluating the superintendent and reviewing his contract, even though it does not expire until spring. While teachers and staff have not been asked for input, I hope the board takes into consideration such operational matters as the recent exodus of many skilled and experienced faculty and staff, and serious morale issues which in part manifested in the threat of a strike and then an actual strike over the past two years. Lastly, once the two-year contract is signed and we have some time to breathe, teachers are looking forward to working collaboratively with building administrators, central staff on issues that affect student learning, including safety in classrooms and buildings, educational programming, and student behavior issues. We welcome the chance to put our professional expertise to appropriate use. Thank you.
Tim Doll?
What's that?
Tim Doll?
Oh, sorry.
Excuse my cold. I felt like I had to come in and say something. My name is Tim Doll, and I'm a Burlington homeowner and a para-professional at J.J. Flynn Elementary School. As a Burlington property taxpayer, I appreciate the work the school board must do to balance meeting the needs of our students along with keeping tax rates within a reasonable level. As an educator, I understand and appreciate the needs of our students in our district. I am here today on behalf of myself and my Burlington School District paraeducator colleagues to relay the importance of the job we do in our schools. I'm not experienced in public speaking and not very good at it. I am very experienced. I've worked with children, and I'm very good at doing this. I have worked at Flynn for over seven years and have had seven years of prior elementary school experience in another Vermont school district. I have thoroughly enjoyed working in Burlington with its great diversity, which presents many challenges but also presents so many opportunities. As Andrew mentioned previously at a meeting, many of we paraeducators must work additional jobs to meet our financial obligations. Many of us choose to work in Burlington kids' after-school to get our 40 hours. Many of us work the summer sewer program year after year, and some of us work for Burlington Parks and Rock Vacation Camps. Many of us also do additional jobs. I, myself, do a summertime bike bookmobile through the Flynn PTO to keep past, current, and future Flynn students reading during the summer. Yes, we do this for additional income, but we also do this because we care so much about the children in our neighborhoods. Doing these additional programs gives us more knowledge of students and their needs. It gives us more opportunities to know families. It gives us information that we can share with teachers to assist in the success of education in our community. We are an important part of the fabric of our school and our community. I love biking, walking, or driving my car through the old North End, as well as the Flynn neighborhoods, and hearing kids in second-floor windows seeing me and yelling, "Mr. Tim, Mr. Tim, Mr. Tim," because they're so excited to see me. I'm often told by parents of Flynn students, "We are lucky to have you at Flynn." I feel appreciated by the staff at Flynn, but lately I'm not feeling like I'm appreciated by the school board. I just wish for you, the Burlington School Board, to appreciate what we mean to our school and our communities. We, the paraeducators of Burlington School District, strive to make a difference in our students' lives. We, the paraeducators of Burlington School District, do make a difference in our students' lives.
Jeff Bennett?
Hello, good evening. My name is Jeff Bennett. I am a parent in the community and a teacher in a neighboring school district. I am here tonight to express my concern about the rhetoric coming from Montpelier last week when the governor was discussing school funding in Vermont and urge our board to lead any response. Not too long ago, a powerful person we're all familiar with said, "No one knew healthcare could be so complicated." Now, a similar thing could be said about education, but I would add in why. Everyone who is engaged with Vermont education in any capacity knows that Vermont education funding is complicated, but to recall the previous quote, no one knows why education funding is so complicated. I've been a public school teacher for 13 years. My mother was a teacher for 40 years. Education has changed a lot in the short time since I've been a teacher, and parts of it are now unrecognizable from when my mom was teaching, which would also have been when many parents in our district were attending school. Granted, it may be hard for people who are not directly engaged with schools on a daily basis to understand how IEPs, PLPs, 504s, ELLs, proficiencies, advisories, and transferable skills impact education, but for those of us here, for those of us who are, we understand that it has changed and continues to evolve. Yet we still talk about education funding with the same metrics as we did 20, 30, or even 40 years ago, before state and federal mandates and when some might say that education was simpler. For example, teacher-to-student ratio or student-to-faculty ratio. The complicated nature of what it means to offer quality education cannot be summarized in so neat and succinct a soundbite, and so I call on the board to begin to lead the change in not necessarily how we fund education, that's Vermont-Peoria to figure out with our input and guidance, but instead how we talk about education, using metrics such as true class size, which is the average number of students per class in core subjects as opposed to student-and-teacher ratio, and looking at the changes in our state and federally mandated caseloads over time. While our student enrollment across the entire state may be in decline, that is not the case in every district, and certainly is not the case when you look at how mandated and chosen services offered by our district have increased and changed over time. To continue to use the same metric and rhetoric to try to fix the broken mechanism of school funding is almost negligent. I'm not asking the board to solve the problem of school funding, but I am asking the board to lead the discussion on how we effectively talk about our schools and our teachers and our faculty and our staff. They are all under attack, some more than others, and we need to change the dialogue, and I urge you to lead that change. Thank you.
Claire Wool.
Hi, my name is Claire Wool, and I am a parent-volunteer in the Burlington School District. I have come here back in August last month, and I typically ask why certain questions. I don't typically bog down the school board with day-to-day issues. We try and work out at the school level. But I come here tonight because on November 27th, we read in our Front Porch Forum that the board would consider the superintendent's salary for FY '19 as well as the parameters of a contract renewal. And the last time I spoke with you during an executive session, I just brought up the concern that we are in December, and we still hadn't completed our teachers' contract, that we stopped the strike in September, and we still were at impasse at that point and now fact-finder with our paraeducators. And I was concerned that we would be prematurely renewing a contract for one individual and what that message sends from the board to our city and our community. To prematurely renew a contract for an individual and not sign a contract for all our teachers and our paraeducators is concerning. So I asked the question why tonight we would consider renewing a contract that, by right, Yao is here through June 2019, based on his current contract, because in June of 2017 we would have had to renew it, or not renew it, excuse me. So he, by right, had that extra year. And I sent everyone on the board an email stating my concern or question that we were excited, if that is the case, to work through June 2019, based on what we knew the current contract is. So I'm concerned we would be prematurely offering anything else at that time, because there is no rush. But there is a rush to honor the contract of the teachers that have been waiting patiently since September. Thank you.
Miriam Stoll?
I'm going to address a bit of what Claire addressed at the end of her talk. My name's Miriam Stoll. I have three children who've gone through the Burlington Schools, two of whom are at BHS now. Superintendent Obang came to our district at a time of chaos. We faced entrenched deficits and were just beginning to understand the gravity of our achievement gap. That is, that in our district, children of color, with special needs, and those living in poverty were not learning or excelling at the rate of their peers. In fact, Superintendent Obang was hired specifically to turn these dire situations around. I submit that he has made excellent progress in this regard, on both as a district, he has also refocused us on students. As an example, next year at BHS, there will be an innovated city semester in which every other day, students will be learning outside the building walls. This is cutting-edge teaching. After years of talking about having a bilingual immersion program, Superintendent Obang has partnered with French speakers in town to get it going. Superintendent Obang convened a multidisciplinary achievement gap data team to work collaboratively with teachers in every school building in a systematic way to customize interventions and close the achievement gap. Closely aligned is the shift to a restorative justice approach to discipline. By any measure at all, Burlington is now the leader in Vermont in this regard. And what about our aging physical plant? Finally, after others made several false starts, Superintendent Obang has convened a public process and task force headed by parents to get to a new high school designed and built, maybe even in our lifetimes. Last, but absolutely not least, is that Superintendent Obang has achieved these outcomes while being fiscally responsible. We have had no budget overruns since he has been here. So, board members, and public too, I ask you to look at the big picture and see where the district is today in comparison to before Superintendent Obang arrived. Many of these changes are just phasing in. Let's see them come to fruition. We need to not only offer Superintendent Obang a contract, but as a community, we need to urge him to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Dodson?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kyle Dodson, and I'm a father of three here in Burlington. One of my sons has graduated from Burlington High School, and two remain. It turns out that Miriam covered a lot of the ground that I would like to cover. I'm here also to support the extension of Superintendent Obang's contract. I agree with her. I still look back in disbelief, quite frankly, that somehow some of my peers and neighbors in the community weren't as appalled as I was with the kind of deficits we used to run. I'm in a position of leadership, and whether you like it or not, Buck stops with the leader. If it happens on your watch, you own it. Doesn't matter what happened beneath you. That's just the way it goes. And so I think it's amazing where we've come to. We've got a very complex district. I look back at, from '95 to 2015, 2015, those might not be the exact dates, but we probably diversified as much as any community in the country. And sometimes I worry that we're a little bit, as much as I love Burlington, a little bit smug in thinking that we wouldn't be plagued by the same problems that pretty much every American city has been plagued with. No one's gotten it right. And so that just suggests we enter with a little bit of humility and understand that we will struggle too. And when we struggle and don't get it right, children suffer. That's who suffers. Children in our schools suffer when we struggle with it, which we will continue to do. I happen to think that Yao Obang is providing steady leadership in this. It's unfortunate, I think, to the degree that leaders set the tone. I think there's a lot of victims of the vacuum of leadership we had in the past. Teachers are chief amongst them. Schools demand leadership. You know, nature abhors a vacuum, and I think there's a vacuum of the kind of bold and courageous and thoughtful leadership that would have been able to respond better to the massive challenges of diversity. I think we're finally getting there, but Superintendent Obang, I think, is suffering from some wounds of the past. People are wounded, I agree, but I think they're misguided in thinking that Superintendent Obang created those wounds. I think he came in at a time when we were already in a really bad place, and he's worked really hard to heal, but he can't do it alone. If people decide he's the bad guy, then it's a foregone conclusion, self-fulfilling prophecy. That's how it works. So I'm appealing to people to look closely at where we came from, go back, read the papers, look at where we were, look at some of the record of where we are now, and I would encourage people to provide the support so that we can do the work that children need.
Thank you.
Dan Cunningham?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dan Cunningham. I'm a resident of Burlington. And along the lines of that which is hidden is news, everything else is just PR, I'd like to bring up the point that the superintendent's contract and the renewal thereof, the issue around that is not whether or not Yao's done a good job or a poor job, or what the various examples people can point out are. The issue is how the school board is approaching it. This is something that has been described as a motion to consider a personnel matter. That is not descriptive at all, and by the way, you have to drill down five clicks on a website and hit refresh several times today just to get that bit of information. Now, that's not clear, and it's not open for the city of Burlington. And by the way, it's almost certainly not in compliance with the State of Vermont's open-meeting laws. So what the public wants is fair and valid input from teachers, from parents, from paraeducators, and from principals to discuss what's probably the most important issue on the table, which is the superintendent's contract. And I don't see any reason why this needs to be rushed along and couched in hidden terms, so that just to find out what's going on, citizens of Burlington are having to email each other. We're just asking for openness, and we're asking for a public process here. Thank you.
Seeing as there's no other comments or questions, I will open it up now for board statements. Commissioner Curry.
Thanks. I just wanted to, as the longest-serving board member, when I was here in 2013, I wanted to just let people know that we were absolutely considering the superintendent's contract extension while negotiations had not completed with the teachers at that time. In fact, the negotiations with the teachers went well past that date, and the board had a parallel consideration of the superintendent's contract. Also, wanted to just correct the record in terms of the citizens having to email each other to find out what's going on. There were Front Porch Forum notices and PTO notices and other opportunities that the public was made aware of through our generous services from RETN at the last meeting during public forum, where we encouraged those who commented at the last meeting who also commented tonight to please call us. Some of them availed themselves of that opportunity. I've had conversations with a number of folks as a result of that, so just want to state for the record that the public comment we just heard was out of sync with what actually got relayed to folks who were here at the last meeting.
Commissioner Wick?
I want to thank every person who came tonight. It's so good to have citizen engagement in this, pro or con, the issue's on the table. Thank you. I remain very concerned about the process here for the superintendent's contract renewal and the openness with which this board has been penning its agendas, and I think we need to improve a great deal in terms of that. And I'm not yet convinced by our council's email that we have the power this evening to approve it.
Ms. Seguino.
I wanted to respond to the first commenter who urged the board to engage with Montpelier in discussing education differently. I personally also think we have to talk to them about funding education differently, but I wanted to just say I really appreciate your comment, and we've been having these conversations about talking about the fact that, for example, with the increase in socio-emotional needs in the classroom, one student in the classroom today requires more work than, let's say, one student 10 years ago, and so those raw data don't really give an accurate picture of where we are. And I wanted to let you know that we are reaching out to legislators, and we've invited the BEA to join us. I think we have a shared goal in describing how Burlington is, A, is not losing enrollment in the way other districts are, and B, Burlington has a variety of challenges that make just sort of these simple indicators really inaccurate. And I think many of you know that in Burlington, 55% of students are free and reduced lunch, and that compares to 22% in Champlain Valley, for example. So we are trying to make the case to our legislators and to paint a more accurate picture of what our challenges are in responding to the governor's request that we increase the teacher-student ratio. So thank you for that comment, and we are working hard on it, and we are grateful the BEA has joined us on that.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Moving on, so we'll move on to the Student Support Services.
This is a section of the board agenda that you hear. We've been focusing on operational pieces within our district, and we've had a number of staff in different departments and school level sort of give some contextual information around the different supports we give to students. And tonight, we have our Student Support Services Director, Laura Nugent, who's going to talk specifically about Student Support Services, but also narrowing on the special education component of that. So I'll pass it over to you, Laura.
Thank you. So, student support services is a pretty broad title, and special education services are just really a part of it. We also are, my department also supports students on IDA, B, I'm sorry, let's start again. My department also supports students on Act 504 ADA plans, which is a general education plan, substance abuse prevention, social workers, which are both Howard and district staff, nurses and interventionists, and it looks like the bottom is off a little bit, and guidance. So that's the broad focus of my department. Next slide, please. Tonight, we're going to focus on special education, and I also, again, put underneath on this slide here, we have 592 students in December 2016 was our last completed child count that had IEPs, or children with disability, under the Individual Education Act. Children with 504s under the ADA are not considered a part of that number, because that's a general education program. So what I'm talking about in this data will always be about students on IEPs. And so in December 2017, which is, you know, just obviously now, we have 160 paraeducators, special education paraeducators, which is not to be confused with planning room paras or general education paras, between the preschool through the 12th grade. We have 51.8 special educators. And speech pathologists, there are 16 district-wide and four speech SLP assistants. And we have nine school psychologists, there's one for every school, which has been a really wonderful thing to have. And discrete trial intervention, which is a program where students with behavioral concerns- concerns, particularly autism, learn what it's like to be a student so that they're more successful in the classroom. That really gives us a ratio of one staff member for every 2.45 students with disability under IDEA, which is, you know, a relatively low number, student-teacher ratio number. But keep in mind, too, these are direct services people, and these are people who also work with general education students as well. So we were looking at numbers, and certainly Rebecca Holcomb's call for increased or higher student-teacher ratios was part of my thinking, but there's more to it than just that, and I want to show some depth in what we have for staffing ratios in all of our schools at different grade levels. The preschool, for example, has one special educator for every 10 students enrolled in the program. That is the total enrollment that we're talking about here, including Gen Ed students. However, at the elementary school level, there are 72 students for every one special educator, which is within the tolerance. The tolerance, according to Michael G. Ngreco and the Chittenden County Special Education Directors, is between 60 and 80 total enrollment students per special educator. As to give us sort of, you know, some walls to hit from, it really isn't set in stone, but it gives us an idea of what would be typical in our area. The middle school is 68.1, and the alternative program is very low, which is appropriate because we're talking about programs for kids with emotional-behavioral disturbance within our district. Now, the high school, on the other hand, is quite high at 107.3, and that explains a lot of challenges at the high school in terms of students having difficulty getting assistance with transition needs into adulthood and employment programs. I feel that that's very indicative of that. Now, when you look at the speech pathologist ratio, that should be 38 per student with IEPs, so you'll see that students with IEPs per speech pathologist should be 38. We are doing pretty well everywhere except for, again, the high school and the middle schools. And those numbers do include the assistance of the speech assistants. And, excuse me, with para-educators, we are generally within tolerance with our special education para-educators, which should be between 5 to 7 students per child with IEPs. What gets tricky with that, though, is that some of these para-educators work with the children one-on-one, which can skew the numbers a tad, but we are doing okay with that. I would subjectively, more than subjectively, say that we need to train our para-educators a little more effectively so that we can make their jobs a little less stressful. They're certainly willing to do the training. They've indicated, we have a training program, we started for 25 para-educators, it's going very well, and very well received by them, and actually calls that really are wishing for more.
Special ed.
Special ed, yeah, and I have to say that that's very important that we remember special ed para-educators, because as the public mentioned, and Stephanie, you mentioned, that their funding silos really do limit who our staff can work with, and really gravely impacts budget considerations. And you'll see overall our percentages, the preschool is 57%, children with disability under IDEA. The elementary school is 16%. The middles are 18%. Our alternative programs, which makes sense, is 68%, although our Horizon program's a little higher than we would like it to be. Our on-top program is as intended, at 100%, students with disability. And the high school is at 12%. So this is what our data looks like in terms of the disabilities, or the primary disabilities identified, under the child count in 2016. We just barely completed the child count for this year, but it needs to be verified. Unfortunately, I don't have those numbers to share with you today, but hopefully we'll have them soon. My guess is that we're going to see an increase in emotional disturbance, but that's totally a subjective opinion right at the moment. We also, though, conversely, which makes it more complicated, that we also have, if you look down further, we have specific learning disabilities. Now, that number is also pretty high, it's higher, actually, than emotional disturbance from last year, which means that is the category under which children have disabilities in reading or math specifically. So we have disabilities under academics and emotional disturbance, which those things are very different in the way that they're supported. So we've really got a broad spectrum. I think that's one of the complexities of our district, that we have developmental delays, typically our young kiddos, young children, and we have students with learning disabilities, but we also have emotional disturbance, which really require a great deal of support. Other health impairment can also be a very broad category. So I thought it'd be interesting to show everybody what we have for students from demographics. And this is the child count, again, from December 2016. The vast majority of students identified with disability are white. We have more males identified than females, which is totally in line with the national trends. One thing we don't have, we aren't over-identifying our EL or refugee families. I personally think we under-identify them. That's based on the fact that I think that a lot of our refugee families are not, or new American families are not aware of the processes and what's necessary, and we're working on outreach to our families to make sure that they know what their rights are under IDEA. Data that I think we really need to get a hold of from my office is socioeconomic status through free and reduced lunch, and how kids with disability are impacted by poverty. I think we also need to know what our transient rate is. And it's one thing that the AOE does not track the transitivity rate of students who have disability. And this is, you know, it's not intended to sound like fault, but it certainly is something we need to know, because a student could move in and out of our district, several of them do, without ever being tracked on our annual check, and they really count as another one, you know? So I think, you know, honestly, I would, I can't back this up with any hard, fast data yet, but I would say that the high school has impacted by at least 20 to 25 students with disability under IDEA that we never count in our data. So that impacts our teachers and our para-educators as well, special ed para-educators. So 76 of our pre-K students who are disability under IDEA are receiving the majority of their service hours in a regular early ed program, which is a wonderful thing. We strive to be an inclusion district. I don't know that we have always done it. As well as we like, we're working on it. 370 of our 592 students were included in the 80% or more of their day. There's another measure that's from 40 to 60% of the day, I believe that number was somewhere 80 or so. We do have roughly 25 to 30 students who are not in our schools at this time, which I'd like to see that number reduced if we can build a continuum of services. But in any case, we need to always remember as we go forward that just because our students are in our classrooms is not indicative of inclusion. Inclusion means belonging and not just presence. So there was a few questions. I thought, you know, I'd take the moment to answer for myself so everybody could hear. So para-educators, special education para-educators are always the best support for students with behaviorist challenges. Oftentimes, people will come to me and we say, "We need a para." And then after digging a little bit, we find that the support the student needs is greater than what a para-educator can be expected to provide. So, for example, if a student is unsafe with trained staff, then it's not fair to expect that a para-educator is an appropriate support for that student, that looking at other better supports, or I shouldn't say better, because our paras are not less than, they're different. And looking at the continuum of supports to provide good support for them is ideal. The best thing to remember, though, with any adults attached to any child, whether it's a para-educator or anyone else, that a great deal of literature is indicating that attaching an adult to a student is actually a barrier to their education, their contact with their classroom teachers, and with their peers, as often as not, unless there's significant planning around that. So can special educators and special education para-educators be used as substitutes for general education teachers who are absent, or to support students with behavior problems? It's not best practice. What happens is students lose services because if there are absentees and our para-educators are pulled out to support the classroom. I don't have a ready answer of what to do differently or better, because we are having some difficulty replacing staff when they're missing, but I am very concerned about special educators and para-educators being overtaxed in terms of being substitutes for Gen Ed teachers. But at the same time, we're all one school, so we, you know, each school is one school, so we want to make sure we support them. Can special education staff work with all students? Well, you know, special education staff are pretty trained people, they know lots of good things, and a lot of them are very skilled and compassionate and wonderful human beings, and honestly, they could work with a wide range of kids, but that federal funding silo gets in the way, and we have to, every year, we have to, at three different times of the year, we have to justify what they do to the minute, to the State Agency of Education. So the answer really is no, they really can't work with a wide range of students. I'd love to see funding silos changed. And we talked about how all schools are not inclusive just because they have students in them all the time with disability. Can special education para-educators and special educators serve students in kindergarten classrooms with high student needs? Well, that's an interesting question, which is why I put it there, because I think it's interesting. But the biggest issue with that is, under IDEA, the way that students are identified with disability requires that we show adverse effect, except for if they're under a certain age, but for the most part, they do. And when they're in kindergarten, by that time, they're getting pretty close to the point where they have to be demonstrating adverse effect. So it's very difficult, given the breadth of developmental mile markers for students, to be able to identify a child with, like, say, a reading or math disability as early as kindergarten. And that could be true with behavior disabilities, too, because emotional behavioral disturbance requires identification over time, over a fairly long period of time, across all settings. And that can be very challenging, and a lot of behaviors that are not considered typical for a third grader would be typical for a kindergartner, even if the behavior's inappropriate in a lot of cases. So this causes a problem with using our special education staff in those classrooms to provide supports, because we have those funding silo issues again. So, you know, I would suggest strongly that we consider behavior and Tier Two, or I should say, general education supports that will help prevent identification of disabilities. Ideally, we don't want people rushing headlong into identification of more and more kids with disability, because it's the only thing we have to support them. And that is pretty much my thing for tonight. Thank you.
So just quickly, before we take on any questions, just in summary, you can see that Laura's portfolio of Student Support Services encompasses a number of different areas, and we specifically focused on special education tonight because we thought there's so many pieces, and we could have actually spent two hours, right, talking about different aspects, but we wanted to share that piece. Another big chunk that we haven't had a chance, that Laura actually supports and supervises the pre-K, which has a significant funding impact, but also is our leading edge in terms of what's coming for our system coming forward, and that's probably where the biggest bubble is in terms of students. And so we will look in the new year to have a presentation just specifically around that particular area this year. But we want to just kind of bring the special ed issue to the forefront, because there is a lot of concern. You saw there, there's some successes, but we have some challenges, and so we've identified that, and we'll continue to work to try to remedy them.
Any questions? Ms. Curry.
So I was just wondering, as a legislative item, if we could, if you are familiar with the trend over time of the child count disability category, that data, that slide you showed, how that trend looks over time, and, you know, how that could fit in the context of our conversation with the legislature?
I am able to compare last year's data, December 2016, to other districts. Unfortunately, our 2015 data that was collated before my arrival was in error, and so we can't use that with any reliability.
Do the state have data from previous years?
Yes.
Yeah, they do, but you listen to what Laura said, often the state gathers data from us, so if our data is inaccurate, their data's not going to be reflective of exactly our needs. And so she's made the correction last year, and so now we're able to compare, because there are some inaccuracies in terms of going forward, but we understand what they are, and Laura's doing a good job of sort of tracking that down.
So are you saying before 2015, all of that data had some methodical?
I'm not entirely certain if 2014, or 13, or 12 were in error, but I know factually that 2015 data was in error, because that, for no other reason, the fact that our data jumped with almost 100 students for child count in 2016. There are a lot of other indicators, too. I would hope that we didn't have years and years of data errors, but I can't say with any confidence that we did or didn't.
Thanks.
Ms. Barlow.
Thank you for your presentation. I had a question about the pre-K student with IEP to overall school population, it seemed really high. Is that just because the sample size is small, it's 57%? Or is that because?
We have intentionally reached out to students with disability in the early ed program. We have partnered with, also, we have community partners, but the vast majority of the students that we serve within our district are students with disability. We also reach out to students without disability to be peers, but that's why our numbers are high.
Stay on that question, before we track pre-K.
I'm sorry, before.
Before we track pre-K, did you see the big jump on the elementary side with the first evaluation when they came into kindergarten?
Oh, yes.
So that was, so all it did was just shift?
Uh huh.
That piece just shifted downward because they were being identified earlier?
Yes.
Okay. And how do you look at a trend on that when it only goes back so far? You have to compensate for that. Only a couple of years back, we didn't have that.
Correct. But we're fortunate that we led the way in early ed education in Burlington. Before it was really required, we were already doing it, so we're way ahead of the curve on this. So we do have a few years' data on there, and I feel that...
You still have to normalize if you go too far back.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Orwell, was that your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, you said that we need to do more with new Americans on testing them. Are we going out and doing that, or working with the ESL department to get them tested? Because, I mean, I truly remember when I worked here, of kids that were ESL or EL that were, it was clear they had learning disabilities, but they weren't ever tested.
So it's tricky, there's a lot of complexity around our new Americans that may or may not have disability. We want to make sure that we don't go too far the other direction and over-identify students who are, while they're learning English. There is very little guidance from the Agency of Education about where that pavement hits the road in terms of disability for someone who is learning English. But there are some students, as you mentioned, that it's pretty obvious, right? As there are within the general population as well, we want to make sure that these students are not languishing while we decide whether it's equitable or is fair yet, especially at the high school level I'm mostly concerned with, because we lose our window of opportunity pretty quickly with kids that are moving on into adulthood without any supports. So we need, we're still working on that. We, as a district, need to create processes within our own district because we don't have any models outside.
That's a consistent challenge, too. And Miriam was here last month and talked a little bit about it, that it is challenging. Is it a language issue sometimes, or is it a special ed issue, right? It's hard to determine, especially the younger they are, the more difficult it is.
Yes.
And one of the things you don't want to do is to track all those students into a certain category when it might not even be the challenge, right? So that is probably a national debate around when we do it, how do we do it, and how do we support. But we know that we've got to get better in trying to get those supports earlier in sort of de-aggregating who really actually needs special ed support, who needs additional EL support.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. McLaren.
Is there anything we can do as a board to better support your work, this work?
Wow, you know, sure.
She wants to say budget, that's what she wants to say.
Send money away.
Yeah, I mean, if I took the money away, I would have to say that I don't know that we don't have sufficient numbers of staff. What I think we is that we don't have sufficient training of staff. I don't think that we are maybe hiring the staff types that we need so much. I would like to see more done in the general education world for differentiation of instruction and inclusion in the classroom and welcoming, so that we don't identify students as rapidly as we could or probably will otherwise. If our teachers, our Gen Ed teachers, are maxed out and constantly playing triage in the classroom, what's going to happen is are going to be more and more referrals for our special education identification that may not be appropriate.
Right. And I would say that actually, we have sort of added, just in the last two budgets, supports for special education, but what Laura has done is not necessarily just added to the resource, she's making some changes in terms of how to utilize those resources, and I know that her focus is around, more specifically, around the training, the type of training to meet the specific needs as well, too. So we'll continue to keep our eye on the prize on that one for sure.
Anyone else before we close this?
Anyone else before we close this?
Susan Marine, just a last one.
How do you, I really appreciated what you said about inclusion. How, do you have a way of measuring whether there's been any progress on creating more inclusive environments in the schools?
You know, honestly, I don't think we've made progress on inclusion. I think we've lost a few really great programs that were in place, that were helping with inclusion, such as Reading for Inclusion. And, I think that moving forward with the parent advisory committee that meets, will should meet a few times a year, is certainly something that's high on my priority list, so that we can start getting our eyes back on that. I would say that, it would be a mistake to say that we're making progress. I'd say, at best, we're holding steady, and I, I think we've lost a little ground, and we need to get back on that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We'll go ahead and close this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, move on to the board report and the liaison report. Commissioner Owell, Vermont School Board Association Liaison, report.
Yes, I'm, I will be going to the Governor's Summit on Education next, this Thursday, no, next Monday, next Monday.
Okay.
So, that's-
Have you been in touch with the, the VSB, though?
Well, they're the ones that sent it to me, but wouldn't mean-
Yeah, I can talk to you afterwards.
Okay.
Commissioner McLaren, city council report.
Sure, yeah, I've just started sort of introducing myself to the city council, and generally, just everyone, I guess, because I'm new to the board. So, but, in that role as liaison to the city and the city council, and using our, our budget process as the vehicle of introduction. So, trying to open up a dialogue with anyone that is willing or wants to have it about our budget, and ways the city can help support the work that we do. And, so, yeah, having conversa, beginning to have conversations with the city councilors and the administration, particularly around pilot funding and potential uses for that former source of revenue, that meet the criteria of the Agency of Education, while also supporting our district. So, I would welcome any feedback from board members that have ideas about creative ways we might be able to implement some of those fun, that, that funding, that meet the criteria of the agency. And, yeah, hopefully, that, we can have a constructive conversation with our city leaders about it before their budget season closes. So, hoping to do that in the next month.
Commissioner Curry, I know you have a question.
I don't.
Okay.
Fine.
Commissioner Barlow, state legislative liaison report.
Sure, yes, we're having a meeting on Wednesday, the 13th, with a contingent from Burlington School District, including administration board members. We have Bob Church from the BEA, and some PTO leaders that are going to join us at Champlain Elementary School. And, we hope to explain some of the complex challenges we have here in Burlington, and ask the legislators who come to, to help us with advocacy in that regard. And, I look at it as like the first of, hopefully, a continuing conversation that'll happen. You know, we'll be able to make the introductions, make the case for some advocacy, and then continue to, to, to ask for that throughout the session.
Thank you.
What was the date and time again?
It's the 13th, Wednesday, Champlain Elementary, at 6:30.
Quick question. A few constituents have asked me if it's open to the public, if you will, parents, that sort of thing?
Right, originally, the format was going to be similar to the meeting we had with PTO leaders last month, around, around budget. But, because of the way it was communicated, we have, and the expectation that was set in some of the social media, we've added a, a public forum at the end of the meeting, after we have that content. So, the public is certainly welcome to come, but we're, our hope, our hope is that the PTO leaders will be there.
Okay. So, if they say, oh, can I come to that meeting, do I say-
There's, there's nothing to prevent them from coming in.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Commissioner Curry, PTO report.
So, I've had the opportunity to visit with, since the last board meeting, the Champlain PTO. And, that was an opportunity to meet a lot of parents, and Jeff was there, and, and really see a tremendous amount of dedication and work on behalf of the district, that these parents have, you know, stepped up and raised a lot of money, and really have a really wonderful community, and, and some great feedback. I took notes that I'll share. And then, I understand, and today, unfortunately, I understand there was a misunderstanding, where apparently I shared with the PTO that the board and the BEA have a tentative verbal agreement for resolving our contract, and I shared that with the PTO in response to a question. And then, unfortunately, as often happens in our district, there was a misunderstanding that this was a statement that was disrespectful to the BEA. So, I just want to say, because there are people in this room who were at that PTO meeting, and also for our viewers at home, that I was responding to a question with the best information I had at the time, and I don't understand why the BEA sees that as disrespectful. It was an honest answer to an honest question, and I think it's really unfortunate that there are still accusations of disrespect going around between us and the BEA, when we've tried to move forward. Just before that, I'd had some really wonderful conversations with parents about concerns and compliments, and many other stories that, you know, really make it meaningful for me being on the board, and I think for parents really respecting and loving their teachers for, for the reasons that they were expressing to me. So, I would just want to say publicly that I have never said anything to disrespect the teachers and the BEA, and the amount of time and commitment that they bring to this district. And, I would hope that when I'm answering honest questions, no one would ever accuse me of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrington, policy governance.
Well, I hope we'll simply be having it in action as the rest of the meeting goes on. If you're carefully attentive to the annual work plans that we approved a couple of months ago, we almost immediately got off-cycle with it, because the September board meeting got canceled. And, since we didn't get to our own board monitoring conversation last month, because the meeting itself took so long, I suggested to Sheriff Porter that we not proceed with monitoring the two additional policies that are on the work plan for December. We had no board monitoring activity for January, so I advised, let's just pull them forward, work on finishing up that conversation from last time. So, the, I'll, I'll send around an updated annual work plan with some annotations about how I see the calendar shifting a little bit, based on what we've actually been doing. Yes. You are leading the way.
Anything else? Nope. And, Commissioner Seguino, negotiations update.
Yes, so I have an update on four union contracts. With regard to the teachers, the contract has been ratified by both parties, but is still unsigned. The parties met on Thursday, November 30th, to discuss some outstanding issues related to specific contract language. The following Tuesday, December 2nd, which is, I guess, about a week ago, based on that discussion, the Burlington School District submitted a revised draft to the BEA, and we're waiting a response. With regard to the office personnel contract, the contract has been executed by both parties. With regard to food services, property services, buses, services, information technology services, these contracts have been ratified by their respective bargaining units, and are waiting board ratification, which is scheduled for the December 11th board meeting, that is tonight. And, finally, with regard to the paraeducators, bargaining over this, this agreement has reached an impasse. A mediation was held on December 7th, but was unsuccessful. I want to just say that both parties work hard, you know, to reach an agreement, and it takes meaningful compromise on both sides, and I think both parties worked hard at that, but we're not there yet. The union requested 4% raises for each of two years, so 8% in total over two years, plus a health insurance arrangement that was not in keeping with our other district settlements. The board offered a 2% salary increase, plus a modest increase in health insurance cost. Details are on the district website, if you'd like to see them. And, on Friday, December 8th, the district sent a letter to the union, seeking to schedule binding arbitration before the end of December, so that paraeducators could be, begin the new year with a settled agreement. And, we're waiting a response to that letter.
Thank you. I'll now close the liaison reports. And, we'll move on to the student commissioners' report.
Okay, so we have a few updates from the school, and then Isaac is going to present with a few other people.
One.
Or, one other people, one other person? So, next Thursday is the Burlington's Winter Concert, which is the student-led a cappella group at BHS. I don't know where this is.
It's going to be at Main Street Landing at 7:00 PM.
Winter sports had their first games last week, and this week. Basketball is in the upcoming couple of weeks.
Girls hockey tied 1-1 on Saturday. Plug for us. The boys hockey team this weekend is going to be in the Bercher Tournament, which they won last year, so that's exciting. Seniors are working towards completing college applications this week. A lot of schools are sending out early decisions, so people are hearing back about that. Quarter two is going to be ending after winter vacation, which is different from last year due to the four days we had off. Last week, all students did yes registration for the yes program, and this, today, in advisory, 9th through 11th graders took an elective course survey for next year, which is the second year that this has been in place, to help scheduling move more smoothly and be more catered to students' interests, which is really great that this has been implemented in the scheduling system. I know Isaac has a-
Hi, everyone. I'd like to invite peer educators, so we can hear, um, help share some information.
Should I stay there?
I think it's, wherever.
And stop the block.
So, right now, at BHS, we're working on a protocol, along with the Health Department, to have condom availability at BHS. Okay, if you want to move on to why condom availability, if you want to go to the nice slide. So, we have a couple of facts about condom availability, natural statistics, and the bottom line is really that condom availability will decrease borders to access by providing students with safe and free access in a place where there are trusted and knowledgeable adults.
All right, so, these are statistics from the Burlington High School Youth Risk Behavior Survey from 2015. As you can see, Burlington is actually significantly lower than the state average when it comes to students who have ever had sexual intercourse. However, in, when it gets, you get to the seniors, over 50% of seniors have had sexual intercourse, and it is important that students have access to the materials they need in order to be sexually active in a safe manner. This is a graph of Burlington High School condom usage rates in comparison to the rest of the state of Vermont. As you can see, in 2011, Burlington High School was well below the state average when it comes to condom avail, condom usage. So, they were at about 56%, while the rest of the state was at 64%. We were low again in 2013, when we were about 53%, compared to the rest of the state's 62%. However, that year, the Advocates for Sexual Knowledge Program began being implemented at Burlington High School. And, so, student peer educators, like myself, I was not there, but there are other people like me, began implementing intervention programs to spread awareness about the importance of condom usage, and the, where students can get condoms around the city. And, so, from 2013 to 2015, Burlington High School actually saw a significant increase in condom usage, even while the rest of the state had an overall decrease in condom usage. So, Burlington High School was at 59%, the rest of the state was at 58%. Even with that increase to 59%, Burlington High School is still well below the healthy Vermont 2020 goal of condom usage rates, which is 75% for male students and 65% for female students. As condom distribution programs in schools have shown to positively affect condom usage rates, without increasing the overall number of students who are sexually active, we believe that the best way for Burlington High School to achieve this goal by 2020 is to implement a condom distribution program at the school.
Next, we're going to move on to talk about the statewide support for condom availability. So, Vermont law requires comprehensive health education, and in Burlington, and the Burlington School District, we require comprehensive health education in elementary, middle, and high school. If you want to continue to the next slide.
So, the Vermont Department of Health and the Vermont Agency of Education issued a joint memo last year, addressing the issue of rising SDI rates among the youth. And, so, the memo states, "To promote and protect the health of young Vermonters, we recommend that school districts and supervisory unions have in place policies and procedures to implement comprehensive sex education and condom distribution programs." So, both the Vermont Department of Health and the Vermont Agency of Education stand in full support of condom distribution programs at high schools in Vermont.
Along, if you want to go to the next slide, along with this, the American Academy of Pediatrics says, "The school should be considered appropriate sites for the availability of condoms, because they contain large adolescent populations and may potentially provide a comprehensive array of related educational and healthcare resources."
Also, the Centers for Disease Control recommend condom distribution-level programs. Also, Burlington High School would not be the first high school in the state of Vermont to be implementing a condom distribution program. Harwood High School has had a program actually since 1994, and other high schools around Vermont that have condom distribution programs include BFA St. Albans, BFA Fairfax, Southwest Vermont SU, Mount Abraham, and Randolph High School. Also, Berry will begin a condom distribution program in 2018. So, Burlington High School would just be joining a group of other high schools who have already had these condom distribution programs in place.
Going back to some state legislation, if you want to continue, state law requires that children 12 years and older have legal right to, hold on, sorry about this, to sexual health services, sorry, I was looking for the right terminology. And, BHS would simply be one more access point for these students. So, it's not like this would be a new thing in the community. A lot of other places around Burlington already have this service, BHS would simply be another one on that list.
So, this is the condom availability protocol that has been written for Burlington High School. It was developed by an advisory committee that included members of the school administration, the nurses and health office, the council, the BHS council, and Burlington High School peer educators, with assistance from Planned Parenthood, who has supported other schools in developing condom availability programs as well. The coordinated school health team has also been in support of condom availability at Burlington High School.
So, this is something that I'm sure is a cross reminder in this presentation, but the Planned Parenthood of Northern Renewalment has committed to providing BHS with free condoms as long as they're able to, solving the immediate financial need. And, also, in, in the future, if this ever becomes an issue, the BHS council has committed to providing fundraising for these condoms in the schools, so it wouldn't be a budgetary issue on the board's part. Also, due to school discounts, 1,000 condoms are available for $60. So, any budgetary issue has been one of that.
So, research shows that well-designed and well-implemented SDI prevention programs can significantly reduce sexual risk behaviors among students, and there is no evidence of increased likelihood of students having sex through participation in such programs. It's actually shown to have a sort of opposite effect. They show that there's a delay in, for sexual intercourse, a decrease in number of sex partners, and an increase in condom and contraceptive use. And, so, us at Burlington High School are ready and excited to begin implementing this protocol in January 2018.
I think something, quickly, that's important to note, is that we've been working alongside the Health Services Office at the high school, in creating this.
Thank you.
the Health Services Office at the high school in creating this.
Good job.
I don't think the board has any questions.
Hey, we're good. Thank you.
So, how do students encounter the peer counselors? I noticed there's a yes program facilit, a yes course that seems to have some ask-peer counselors connected to it, but how do students encounter you guys?
So, what we do is there is about five of us now, and there's about three more in training currently to become peer educators. And so, what we do around the school, we put up flyers around generally prom and also during, to get yourself tested month, which is April, with information about consent, usage of contraception, SDI prevention, and things like that. We also present in freshman health classes every year, actually every semester because they're a semester long. And we give information about sexual decision-making, talking about sexual activity and consent. And we also table once a month at Burlington High School with a variety of topics, including media influences, hormonal contraceptives, barrier contraceptives, and also SDIs, and sexual myths and facts.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair.
Excuse me one second, just before we get started. Commissioner Harrington, I don't see anything on the agenda for the approval of these audit, of these items, which may have just been a mistake on the agenda, because we were gonna approve these at each meeting. Which is, which is fine, we're still learning how to do this. So we would just be moving the approval into the next meeting.
You mean number nine, not, not what's going on now. These are, these aren't monitoring reports.
We're on seven.
You're talking about number nine.
No, nine is the financial conditions, right?
Yeah, that's a monitoring report. This is, these are just updated.
So do we see it for nine?
We should, we should monitor and make a decision, yeah.
Okay, but because it's not, oh, we do have the general policy that we're gonna do that every time, though. That's right, I'm sorry. It doesn't have to be on, it's the general policy that we'll accept or not at these meetings. That's right. Good enough, just want to make sure we're okay with it.
Well, we can, we'll discuss that when we get to nine, so, yeah.
Okay, I'm just, superintendent's report, one of the items that we had scheduled is an audit update, and we've got Director Lavery to give you a update on the process and the progress of our.
There's a short memo on the board, on Board Docs that we've posted updates, folks, but, so, I'm gonna actually skip kind of the end, just so folks know that we were able, despite the kind of rescheduling, to get our auditor to be available next week on the 20th, so that he'll be available by phone. He'll probably have to be early in the meeting process, just given his other events that he has scheduled, but nevertheless, there should be an opportunity there for you to hear directly from him, ask some specific questions, and obviously, once we have the audit fully completed, then we can bring them back and go into any more detail that we want to. But I wanted to provide an update tonight to specifically address the issues that are most relevant as we start to also dig more deeply into the budget-building process. So, if you scroll up just a little bit, so the most important thing here is that our FY '17 audit will show that we're deficit-free for another year. So that means, obviously, that we're not in a situation where we're gonna have to add money to the budget simply to make up prior year's overspending. So that's obviously very good news. Additionally, we are gonna show approximately a $1.1 million unassigned fund balance. This is the money that we can use in the fiscal year 2019 budget that we're building right now. So you've heard me say this before, but one of the longer-term structural challenges we face is, like many school districts, the use of one-time money, particularly when we had the excess growth cap from the state in place. So in order to not put pressure on our education spending growth, we and a lot of other school districts opted to use our one-time money for that reason. And that's great, means you don't have to make deeper cuts, but it also means that over time you are faced with this challenge of trying to generate surpluses to that degree in order to avoid having a structural budget deficit that you ultimately have to fill, either by raising taxes without getting anything new in terms of services for it, or by cutting those services. So, the good news is, $1.1 million, we should come in just about, maybe a little bit less than what we had last year, but close enough that we're not gonna be facing a situation where we have to make any major reductions as we, just to fill, just to fill that gap. That surplus amount in aggregate, well, is, or that fund balance amount in aggregate is a combination of some surplus revenues and some spending savings on expenditures. It's about $650,000 or a little less than 1% of our general fund that we didn't spend, and the balance of it around $450,000 is a one-time revenue over and above our budgeted general fund revenues. So, that's, you know, that's a reasonable amount. Obviously, 1% below budget is not a lot in, from percentage terms, but it's, it's kind of good enough for our purposes, let's put it that way. You know, obviously, I would like it to be more just as a, having that kind of security, but in terms of the overall amount, particularly when we got the extra revenue, it was sufficient to get us where we, we needed to be. There are some challenges going forward. Like I said, some of that excess revenue is not things that we would necessarily expect to see in subsequent years. For example, we received a particularly high level of impact fees last year, which are fees that get transferred from the city related to, related to development that's going on. And that's not something that's likely to continue, and I can say that through our first payment this year, it was substantially less than what we have, what we received to date last year at this time. So that's an example where it's great to have those one-time funds, but you can't necessarily rely on them happening year in and year out. So that is the update for tonight. You'll, I'll kind of touch back on this again during the budget presentation. And as I mentioned, next week, Ron Smith will be able to participate on the phone so that you can ask particular questions about the audit work.
Questions, Commissioner Barlow.
I had a question about the use of fund balance. You said you wouldn't want to use it, well, we have, we have a structural deficit because of the use of one-time money, but would one appropriate use of one-time money be to fund the contingencies that our auditors have told us that we need in our budget?
Yeah, you certainly could do that, right? Contingency, something where you're not definitely going to spend it, any kind of one-time spending amount or would be appropriate, because then you're potentially in a situation where you don't spend it, and that helps alleviate your structural deficit.
So we could potentially use one-time money to try to, to create a contingency reserve that we intended to create last year, but weren't able to because of budgetary pressures?
Yes, I mean, that is one.
And then the second sort of related question is, if we had a contingency, would it show up as a fund balance every year, or would it be accounted for in a separate way?
I think the, I think the correct answer is that it depends on how you set these things up, particularly if you're trying to set up reserves, you potentially have to go to the voters to do that. So there's some complexity in that, and it, it kind of depends on how it's actually set up.
Thank you. Commissioner Wood?
I have two quick questions, Nathan. One, forgive me if I overlook this, but did you say when we're gonna be able to get a copy of the audit?
As soon as we have it completed. So, the, we don't know exactly when that will be, so we're pretty close. They've, the auditors have finished all of their onsite testing. They have to kind of aggregate it all and put together a few statements, but there are a couple pieces of information, or at least one piece of information that we're still waiting on. Could come as soon as tomorrow, which is our, an actuarial estimate from our actuary on post-employment benefits. So it gets kind of technical, but the point is, someone else does that analysis, and they send it to us and it goes into our audit. It's not a big part of the audit, which is why it won't be a problem for our auditor to kind of talk about the significant things, but technically speaking, it's not complete until they have the information like that to put in some of the notes.
And my second question, do we yet have a sense on the progress we've made this year with regard to the items in the management letter?
I have a sense, and I don't want to prejudge what they're going to say too much. I would say we've made some modest progress, some areas, I think, in particular on the benefits front, which was their number-one comment from last year. And we could talk more about this next time around, but we did make some significant changes in terms of staff and kind of structurally in our organization around, around that. And then some other areas, like student accounts, we invested in some time, staff time in that, and we're kind of poised to make some progress, but then we had some turnover, and so we kind of stalled out. So there's areas where we've, I think, can say we've done pretty well, and other areas where frankly, we didn't get where we wanted to be.
Right, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Curry.
So, along the lines of that example of excess revenues being impact fees, can you just give us some examples of others? I mean, presumably, we wouldn't consider general fund or special ed as excess revenue.
Right, we, yep, I think we, off the top of my head, let me see, I think we received, I think we did a little better than budgeted in some of our extraordinary special ed reimbursement, which is when we have very high-cost students and we get a high-level reimbursement for them, and...
But then we don't spend as much as we thought we would.
No, we, I mean, we spent, we spent the money, but we got, if you imagine, essentially, it was spent on an area that was eligible for more reimbursement than anticipated. So if you were gonna spend $100, and instead of spending it in the category that would subject it to a 50% reimbursement rate, it was in a 90% reimbursement rate. So, a situation like that.
You're never sure which category it's gonna fall into.
Yeah, I mean, you can't.
It's a classification thing?
It depends on the students, the student needs.
Yeah.
And how much that costs us, essentially.
Regarding the management report, what I used to call the Miriam Stoll Hit List, because she never lets you live it down. The, can we get a, these items are closed, when we come to the audit point, or can we get, okay, these are closed, these may never be closed because they're not the highest priorities in the world. These, we would really like to close out when we get time. I know what's going on. Very specifically, the budget controls to force operations within the budget expenditures.
Right.
The, review the stipend practice and policy, securing the bank accounts not on the district books.
Yeah, if you, if you want to email me, I mean, there's been a few, and each year kind of a couple come on the list, and a couple drop off, and a bunch of them stay there. So, but if you email me that, that, I can definitely give you a little update on the status of some of those.
One of the things that we will do, though, once we have the, the letter from the auditors, we will have our response to the, the actions to the board in terms of the items that they identify. We'll say, this is our action, this is our action to remedy that, and it's immediate.
Somebody, and, and, many of us sat through this, right? So it was only in 2000, I just noticed this in 2000, school year 2014, there was $1.2 million deficit. So the things have changed dramatically, right? And that was the big, that was the hammer that came down on us and said, now what do we do? When we got that audit report, right? That management letter was pretty devastating to us. At that time, the presumption was that we were gonna close all these out. Now I think we've all matured to the knowledge that there's some on there that would have such a significant impact on where our, what our goals are, that they're not worth addressing or keeping at the forefront in any way, because there's things that are always coming up. I know the biggest thing was the budget controls. Was the account codes, putting everything into the right account codes, because they were incorrectly done, and so on. So that would be the kind of thing that says, that's what I'd be looking for in this audit report, that big monster that sat us, that said, "We don't know where everything is", three years ago, saying, "What's our confidence level now?"
Yeah, it's definitely higher. I mean, the, from the point of view of the budget controls, the fact that we've consistently been able to produce a balanced budget and to not overspend, I think, is in of itself the evidence that, that you're looking for. There's other comments, as you mentioned, that I don't, I don't think it would be fair to say that we'll never address them. Some of them are bigger-picture challenges, like the pension contributions and things like that, that are kind of common in public organizations. Some of them just require an investment of time that we haven't been able to make yet. So I would say, in the grand scheme of things, we should strive to accomplish them all, but we need to obviously tackle them in order of their significance and our capacity. So I think when it came to the budget controls, that was obviously a top priority, and this past year, we really focused on trying to improve our benefits administration because that was having a direct impact on our, our spending.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kirk?
So, Nathan, when, are we gonna have the letter from the auditors next week, their management letter?
I don't know if they will have the management letter, but I can ask them if that will be done.
Because it'd be curious to see how we compare to last year's at the same time. If we can have, you know, it'd be nice when we get that, to have last year's per se, so we can compare and see actually how we're doing, where our misses are, where, what are we leaving on?
Right, last year's letters is up on the website, but certainly during the conversation, we can talk about.
It would be nice if we could.
Typically, the auditors will say, "This is a repeat of an item before," just to draw attention to the fact that it's still there. Don't forget about it.
Student accounts.
And they'll cut, they'll find, yep, student accounts, yep, that's a good one. So that stuff's, you know, student accounts is a good example, as I mentioned, where we, we made some progress, we drafted a manual, we kind of like, we're moving in that direction, and then we, just by virtue of some turnover and limited capacity for the past few months, you know, we've kind of had to shelve that. But it's one of those examples where we want to keep making some kind of progress. It doesn't mean that it's gonna disappear from the management letter just because we make progress, but eventually, the cumulative impact of that progress should result in that issue not being part of our management letter in the future.
Any other questions?
Way in the future.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're going to move on to our budget development update. There's a presentation on Board Docs here. We'll just start with a quick recap of the input process we've had. There have been numerous community forums, I know some board members attended, I see some folks around here who were at a couple of them. Obviously, there's been public comment opportunities at board meetings, and numerous other avenues for public and input, and also input from staff, principals, directors, and our student board members shared with us some input at the prior meeting. There are some themes to that input, and they are available here, folks can, can read them over. Some of the things are things that we've seen in prior years when we've gone to the public. There's some consistent themes that folks have identified as things that they want to see us do whenever we can, and there are some interesting new, new options up there as well. So we also went through a process where we solicited requests from our staff up through principals, and based on strategic priorities of the district. We got a big list, we've taken a handful of them and thrown them up on the screen, so you can get a flavor of the types of things that people have identified as being things they'd potentially like to see added to the budget. You can see, we estimated there's probably around $6 million of requested additions just on, on that list alone. These are obviously rough, kind of round numbers in some cases, but there's a pretty broad range here of things at all levels of our operation, both in terms of high school down to preschool, and both kind of in the instructional arena, as well as in student supports and that, and kind of operational issues as well. So again, those are slides you can certainly read at your leisure. We'll press on here. I wanted to talk specific about, specifically about some of the other budget pressures. Not all of these things come up when people are asked, "Hey, what do you want to add to the budget?", but there are things that we need to think carefully about. Obviously, the, at the top there, we, we've been talking about it for a while now, are our capital needs, and that's something that we have made some progress in addressing, but we know that there's also a group working on the high school. So that's something that is kind of to be determined. As far as this particular budget that we're building, the fiscal year 19 budget, that's where I'm, I'm having some conversations with Marty to kind of estimate, based on the work plan for the bonding that's already been approved, how much are we gonna need to borrow this coming year, and then what is our estimated debt service that will be associated with that. Salaries and benefits, obviously, are things that increase based on collective bargaining agreements, but also based on factors that are not negotiated, but that are, for example, like health insurance that are not controlled by us. So, VHI did announce some pretty substantial health insurance rates, and that increases. So VHI did announce some pretty substantial health insurance rates and that increases. That's also largely in keeping with some of the health insurance rate increases that have been talked about in other, like not just VHI, I guess was my point. This isn't just that VHI's rates are increasing. If you have your own insurance, you may have gotten similar warning or a notice. There's also the health reimbursement arrangements. So this is a feature of the new health insurance plans. This is a mechanism by which the district supports and covers a lot of the out-of-pocket costs for employees. This is a pressure. Now, this could be an opportunity for savings, but the reality is, we don't know how this will, we don't know because we're transitioning into it, is why there's, there's no data, there's no trend line. We've got limited experience in Vermont schools of using these plans. So we want to be conservative so that we have the money to pay for the benefits to which people are entitled, but obviously, that is a, something we have to think about. We know what the state used as an estimated usage rate when they were calculating how much they thought we would save from this, but in conversations with my colleagues in other business offices around the state, I think the general concern is that the state was pretty aggressive in that assumption. Doesn't mean they'll be wrong, but it seems that most people feel like it's a little too optimistic to be safe when it comes to budgeting. Obviously, the state had different priorities when they were making that, that estimate. So that's what the health reimbursement arrangement is. And folks, we've talked about already, the education fund deficit and that is a pressure that will be felt on tax rates when we, when we get to that point. There's another page of this excitement, retirement, both the city retirement plan and probably the teacher pension plan are likely to require increased contributions in the coming year. The city plan, we pay directly, teachers' retirement is generally funded, we don't generally pay directly for teacher retirement, but, but for the case when staff is paid through federal grants, in which case we do have to pay. So there's an impact on, on our budget there as well. Universal preschool, here's an example where the state mandated rate went up by 2.8%. So we have the governor talking about trying to keep growth in our spending at a rate that's about 2.5% was kind of when he talked about economic growth and in other contexts, it's been even less down to, down to even level funding, and yet, the state is telling us we need to pay 2.8% more for these contracted services. So there's an inherent tension there when we're being given one instruction and then given, being given bills that are, that exceed that rate of growth. Laura did a great job presenting tonight the variety of needs that we have related to special ed and I've kind of broadened the category here to social, emotional. We've heard a lot about the needs, both from our public forums, from the staff, about this being an area where we really need to consider some significant investment because the needs are increasing. And elementary supervision is on there because we have to make sure that we have sufficient supervision staff to cover the times that might now be, to cover for the fact that as a result of our collective bargaining agreements, there are going to be, in some schools, be less teachers performing some of these supervision duties. So we just have to make sure that we've got people there and so that is a pressure that we need to see, we need to do our best to identify what that cost will be. And we're looking at creative strategies to minimize that, but that's still a pressure, This slide, I have to confess, is from last year and I didn't update the numbers, but I thought it was a good way just to illustrate one of the challenges that we face with some of the funding streams. So in, one of the sources of money we get is a special education block grant. And it's a block grant because it's a calculation that the state does based on your eligible staff and it gives you a certain amount of money per staff and that's what you get. And the challenge we have, for example, is that the, by, by law, the formula provides a grant equal to the average state wage. Our wage for qualifying staff exceeds the average and so the result is that the block grant doesn't cover the staff that it's intended to, to cover. Obviously, if you spent less than the state average wage, you'd come out ahead in this scenario. So for example, if the state was to reimburse us at an amount equal to our average wage, then we would get 100% of the money we need to offset that staff. So that's just to illustrate one of the, the challenges that we face where here's a mechanism designed to support us having this staff and yet, it actually doesn't provide all of the money we need to pay for that staff. Those are last year's numbers, but I thought it was just a good example to kind of illustrate some of the challenges we have. So generally, moving to our broad process, we're looking at identifying some areas to reduce spending, taking some of those reductions and identifying opportunities to reinvest and reallocate some of that and ultimately, use the strategic plan as our guide for making those decisions. The, and one area that we've talked about a lot, so we thought we would just put this up here, is that there have been reductions in the past. People say, well, I'll take it from the central office administration and on one hand, it's, you know, no one should be excluded from this analysis and that absolutely does need to happen. And so we just thought it would be important to remind folks of some of the reductions that we made both two years ago and we had some significant reductions across the district. And last year, we also identified $150,000 of reductions in some of our central administration. So we thought it was important to show that, kind of lead, lead by example that we've tried to do in the past. So as we look to build the budget, the first thing we're going to do is add in things where we say, well, we're required to increase spending in these areas. We talked about some of the pressures, some of them are also requirements where we don't have an option and so we listed some of them up there. It's probably all pretty easy for you to understand is what you're seeing. Maybe the one that is the least intuitive, but we have mentioned before, is the last one on the list, the multilingual liaisons and the general fund. Last month, you heard a presentation about the important work that these folks do. The challenge we have is that the grant that supports them is Title III and the Agency of Education is telling us that they are not going to continue to approve the level of funding that we have been using in the past to support these positions. So when the Agency of Education says you can't use your grant money to do that anymore, that means that we need to either stop doing it, which we don't believe is an option, or we need to support it with our general fund dollars, which is what we intend to do. So you will ultimately see that when we bring forward the details, you know, and our, of what we believe we need to add for next year, but these are things that are definitely going to be part of what we bring forward.
And what's OPEB?
Oh, I'm sorry, yep. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. So another clever approach that the state used when it came to trying to address the sustainability of the state teachers' retirement fund is that they realized that they were paying the OPEB benefits, which are in this case, health insurance and retirement, they were paying those benefits out of the retirement fund. And so as a result, they were essentially robbing their own retirement fund to use these benefits on. So what they did was change the rules around this so that now we have to pay separately for new entrance into, into the system. So if we hire someone who is new to the, the system, we have to pay an additional fee for those teachers that goes to meeting this future post-employment benefit that they will be entitled to.
But we don't pay for the ones that are already in the system or how is this?
Right. There's, I can't remember the exact way it breaks down, but there's, right, we don't necessarily, we don't have to pay for everyone who's in the system already. I don't know if there is a subsidy implicit in there where the, we're getting charged for people to offset that, but that is, that was the logic of the, the system anyways, to try to address, you know, the sustainability of the fund, but of course, it just ends up impacting local school budgets.
So we raise the taxes and not the state?
Right, we raise the taxes, yep, exactly.
Download it down.
So priority spending areas, so in addition to the required areas, what are the other areas that we want to focus on? And we identified five of them here, certainly maintaining our class sizes within the AOE education quality standards. We mentioned increasing social, emotional sports, those are certainly two of the big ones. We want to maintain and potentially increase our liaison staff, it's not, I'm sorry, and then the two others here, I'll be pretty familiar with the board in terms of the priorities. You guys have been advancing, targeting investments toward the achievement gap and obviously, investments in continuing our move toward restorative practices. A little bit of enrollment context for the budget. You can see here, we've looked at what we have budgeted versus actual enrollment at the high school trends here. The good news is, we are within the amount that we've had for a couple of years, actually. We've, we've expected more enrollment, but the numbers are below our expected amount. We did add a couple teaching positions last year to the high school, even though, and it ended up that we were slightly down, just a tick in enrollment. And we think that with the class size that's rising, that that number will go up next year. We know there'll be some attrition and we don't know exactly what that will be, but should, we definitely expect it to be higher than it was this year. And on the, go ahead, down the K8 enrollment, we just, you can see some trends over the last three years. I just make note of the fact that it does exclude the preschool classrooms that are located at some of our elementary schools, but you could see there that we have a little bump in middle school expected and our elementary school has actually, enrollment has declined So a preliminary analysis, and this is, this is kind of rough, but I looked at a lot of those required spending increases, although not all of them, but came up with a figure that suggests we'd probably need to add approximately $2 million to the budget just to meet those required. So that's without any kind of major programmatic changes, additions or reductions, just kind of what we would need to do, steady state to do that. And there's a lot more work that, you know, this is an interesting number, but on the other hand, until we come forward with the information about the changes that we're proposing, it's not super meaningful, it's just helpful, I think, for folks to get a sense of what the status quo costs. Now, $2 million is also kind of abstract number in the grand scheme of things. On the next slide, we wanted to just highlight the various variables that go into calculating the tax impact because a natural question might be like, well, what would it cost to increase the budget by that $2 million? And the answer is, we don't know yet because we don't have the variables we need from the state. So we kind of highlighted, use a little color coding here to show the variables that we're still waiting for. Education spending is the variable that we control, that's how much we choose to spend that qualifies for education spending. Equalized pupil count is the number of students we have in our schools adjusted for certain factors that we've talked about in the past, such as your free reduced lunch status or English learners, secondary students, things like that. So the state generates this calculation. I'll jump over the yield for a moment, go to the CLA, that's usually the last variable to come in, at least it has been the last few years, and that's a measure of the degree to which Burlington's property is assessed at fair market value. That number is likely to go down, which will put upward pressure on the tax rate. So that is something that, again, we probably won't see until later in December, if not early January. So the, the dollar yield is the one piece of information that we did get, that came in the letter from the tax commissioner at the beginning of December. The homestead dollar yield declined, that decline puts upward pressure on the tax rate. It means that essentially, for a tax rate of a dollar across all of the homestead property in the state, we won't get, the education fund won't end up with as much money in it. And that is largely driven by, for example, the deficit in the education fund, that one, the use of the one-time money that created the deficit. So by charging a dollar, the fund just won't have as much money in as it would have last year for having a dollar in. So that's a challenge that the state's going to have to address, well, I shouldn't say they have to, they're talking about trying to address it, but from the perspective of calculating the tax rates that we will know in January, in all likelihood, we're going to be using this dollar yield and that means that it's going to put upward pressure on the tax rate for any given level of, of spending. So there's a lot of variables that are still outstanding here. When we have them, we can talk about it in more detail about what each of them means, but I think it's just important to understand the kind of direction or the, where the pressure's coming from in this case. Last year, for example, that homestead yield went up slightly, which helped relieve some of the pressure on tax rates. And I think that's just about it.
One more.
Oh, we got a little next step? Yep, so we're, we're going through, we have a big list of expenditures and we are going through trying to identify the priorities. We also are going through our classroom allocations with our, if you remember, we talked about the last presentation, our kind of needs-based formula where we look at enrollment, but also some of the other needs factors to ensure that we're meeting, but we've used that both for some core teacher allocations as well as for supplies, budgets for schools. And the financial stuff, we kind of just talked about, we're waiting for tax variables and also some of the other revenue variables that the state provides, such as transportation aid and tech support and that sort of thing, vocational support, I mean that. Okay, and lastly, just as, so folks are aware, we have, I think everyone's committed to a special meeting next Wednesday and that will obviously now involve a short discussion with our auditor, but the main focus, or at least one of the big focuses, I think the intent is to be on the budget and for us to present some detailed recommendations.
Can you take questions?
Yes.
Questions? Commissioner Curry.
So I apologize in advance for the number and nature of my questions, but that was a-
So can you do like a couple and then we can find out whatever people want to?
That was a fire hydrant of information and we will never know as much as you, but I would like to be versed enough to speak with constituents about many of the items that you went through. So I'm not sure I have like specific formulated questions, but I'm probably not the only one who would like to understand things better. And so to that end, I tried to write down some questions as you were talking, so I'll just kind of go with what I tried to capture here.
I have to add before you go on as well, too, the other, the other strategy we used that I think was last year that really was effective was, people have the opportunity to send us questions and we're creating a Q and A, so we can have a document that we can also post because your questions would be things that other people who are not here would want to know the answers to.
Yep.
So it's not limited to this, so if you think of questions that, you know, you figure out then send them to us.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but I know how busy you are, so the dynamic there is that it takes a while to get those responses and meanwhile, we have meetings and conversations with our constituents and personally, I didn't feel prepared last year to answer many of those questions because of that timing differential.
So go ahead and just ask some questions.
So the education block grant, certain amount of money per staff, that's special ed block grant?
Yep.
Is that federal funding that's block granted to the state? And then does the state implement a wage cap to manage the inadequate level of money?
No, they don't, no, there's not a wage cap or anything, they just, they set the, they set the reimbursement as saying, on the basis of what the average wage is in the state for these, for these positions. So they collect all that data and they say, okay, the average is, as it was last year, $63,000 and change.
But my question is, the, how is that money governed? Is it a federal grant that comes to the state based on a block grant formula from the feds?
I don't know that, I don't know the answer to that.
It's federal to state.
It's federal to state, but I want to know if the block grant is based on federal form.
If the state's doing, making that law or if the feds are making that law.
Right. Who's making that wage law?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so if we could find that out, that would be something to track for the legislative conversation because if it's the state doing that, then that would be an area where we could point out that once again, Burlington's an anomaly.
Yeah, Commissioner Curry, if we could just, I want to try to close.
So to capture that, were central office reductions redirected to other parts of the budget or eliminated from the budget entirely due to insufficient, you know, tax, because we couldn't raise the taxes enough?
I mean, I guess you could look at that however you want, we didn't spend it on those things, but overall, like last year, the budget went up, it didn't go down by just $150,000, so.
And we made cuts to the budget.
And we made, we made those, those reductions.
Okay.
And we made some, you know, we make additions and reductions, but it was like a conscious effort to identify and have everyone kind of contribute from those departments.
Yes, to the overall reduction.
One more and then we'll move on.
Okay, and-
So come up with a good one. So come up with a good one.
The dollar yield, so, last year you said the dollar yield, hold on, went, it's up last year.
The dollar yield increased slightly last year.
Was that because the state was giving back money, had too much money, so to speak, in the state's bizarre, archaic, weird way of looking at things?
No.
Is it a CLA? But what's it a factor of?
The, oh, so the dollar yield is-
That's 3.23.
Right. It's, it's a factor of a few different things. Part of it is the value of taxable property. Obviously, if the value of taxable property goes up-
Right.
Then a rate of one, the amount, you know, that that $1 tax rate will generate is higher. But it's not that simple, unfortunately. The dollar yield is really saying, how much money will the education fund have with that tax rate? Well, the education fund is not filled only with homestead property tax revenue. It's filled with a variety of other sources of revenue. General fund transfer is obviously another big one, but there's smaller sources, there's sub-sales and use tax, there's the lottery revenue, you know, there's a little, little pieces there. So really, it's, when they estimate the dollar yield, what they're doing is saying, given the estimates for all these other pieces and a $1 base tax rate on all the property, how much money will end up in the fund? And so, the fact that last year they essentially drove up the yield with one-time money and now it's not available, so the yield goes down. The fund won't have as much money in it if, if the rate was just $1 across the board. And so, that means that if you're spending more than a dollar, you're going to have a kind of multiplying effect there where it takes more than a dollar rate just to get to the same amount of money it had last year. And if you want to spend more, it's going to continue to go up.
Okay, thanks.
So I'm going to get about two or three more minutes here and then we're going to have to move on just because I don't want to tie it. I know this is all going to change here shortly, so Commissioner Barlow.
Mine's sort of, I have like a broad stroke question and then, then like an observation. And my broad stroke question is, so we had a one, we may have a $1.1 million fund balance, we have a $2 million-
We will.
So then we'll be, we'll be short like a, you know, $900,000. If you want to look at it in broad stroke like that or not.
No, I would say, no, that's not quite the right interpretation. So, like the education fund, which had one-time money in it, so did our budget. So, you know, we have to be careful about who we're casting stones at, I suppose, in that respect. But, so, if we didn't have that fund balance, then we'd be in a situation where just to spend the same amount of, you know, just to spend the same amount of money we budgeted to spend in this year, we would need to bring in through revenue sources, an additional $1.1 million. And what that means is that your education spending goes up and that's one of those variables that, that drives the tax rate. So, the issue is just to essentially level fund our budget, we needed that $1.1 million. The estimated $2 million or so of kind of cost increases that are just the cost of doing business going up, that's on top of that. So, if we didn't have that, we'd be looking at 3.1 million.
Right, that was my, and I'll just stop there for the interest of time.
Anybody else? Great. Is there, are there restrictions around the Title III money for multilingual liaisons that would prevent us from using it for some other programmatic purpose that is more acceptable to the agency? That is, that would offset what we would increase by needing to general fund for that, those positions?
There are restrictions, but not so many that we can't do that. Just to say, when we inevitably move multilingual liaison costs into the general fund, that will leave us with Title III funding, which within the parameters of that program, we can use for other qualifying expenditures. So, the good news is, we might be able to use it for some other productive initiative. Obviously, in the grants community, we prefer to have the flexibility of general fund dollars because then we can use it for whatever the heck we want. And it doesn't matter if it's ELL or not, even if it is ELL, it doesn't matter if we're potentially supplanting spending we've been doing. Like, we have the flexibility with general fund, whereas we've got the strings with Title III money. So when they say you can't use it for multilingual liaisons anymore, we have to use our kind of more flexible money for multilingual liaisons, which means we are using, we have now a less flexible revenue source that we have to use and try to deliver kind of the best, you know, programming we can with that money.
Yeah, yeah. But that's great. I mean, it'd be awesome if we could-
It's not lost.
Yeah, use it for some of our other spending areas.
The challenge is, it may not be the, the direct priority we're looking for, right?
Yeah.
Like the multilingual liaisons are a priority.
Yeah.
So that's what makes it a challenge in terms of putting the dollars in the right spots.
And then just one more quickly is, the, for the special ed reimbursement, is there a cap on, does the state also determine how many of those positions we can have based on need? Or is that something, if we identify a need, they'll reimburse us at that rate, although lower than what we pay, but we can make the decision on our own to hire those positions if we need them?
Yeah, they don't cap the number of positions. It is kind of a, a lagging reimbursement in the sense that-
Okay.
You can't just keep driving it up. You've got to spend it first, so to speak, so-
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's not a, not free.
So just, and I'm just going to just answer that. I have my other questions, I'll submit to you for the FAQ or the Q and A, whatever we do. In that case, though, at $10,000, I'm going to play broad stroke here, $10,000 for each one at a wage of $70,000. So seven teachers, we're already in seven teachers that we're funding without being funded. We're not getting the block rein on seven teachers. So every teacher after this is not supported by, it's an additional $10,000 on top of that.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, we still have a cost every time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he gets that.
So, I'll just ask everybody to, to make sure that you get all the questions to Nate. I would suspect that he's not going to be able to get them to us before the 20th, all the answers, but I also know he's famous for shaping his presentations for us and so he doesn't have to repeat himself. So if we could just get any questions you might have, I know I've got a bunch myself, so, and we can stop building that on the website to where we can get those things, start getting them posted, so. So, do we know where the meeting on the 20th will be? Okay.
Can I just, I wanted to just refer to the slide prior year central office reduction. So I just wanted to, I guess, just reflect on this a moment. So, central office was cut $450,000 in FY17 and $150,000 in FY18. Do you think that that's had an impact on the efficiency with which central office can carry out its tasks? Yes, Superintendent O'Bang?
You know, as Nate sort of indicated earlier, when we started this process and then when we had conversations, starting to suppose that we needed to set some examples in terms of letting people know that, yeah, we're serious about finding different ways of doing things. And I think we've done that in an aggressive way. But we're at the stage now that we're starting to do the analysis in terms of workload and the right personnel. We've had enough time, a couple of years, to see how it works. And I know at some point I'll be coming back and saying, hey, we need to add resources here. Because we get into demands, we get the demands in terms of people, it's a, it's a double-edged sword, right? People say, cut central office at the same time, also produce this for us and give us these resources, communicate with us more often, or, you know. So, there's a point where we have to kind of shift. I think I'm comfortable at the, at the stage we are now, that we've had enough time to kind of work with less, to see what we can do. And now we're looking at, okay, what's missing in terms of to provide better efficiency and get to the level. And that's particularly one of the reasons why we wanted to show this, to let people know that we have done the, the hard, the hard work on ourselves before we ask others. And I commented last year, we had the 150 we put in the pot, no one else was able to come up with anything. Nothing came from the schools. We didn't get any suggestions from the community consultations in terms of where, and we were the only group to, to be able to put something in the pot. So then we thought that was, that was great. And this year, we're going through the same exercise. We're going to do that every year in terms of looking, even if it's just only $20,000. And we've got $20,000 now we can put in to start the pot. But we're at the stage where we do have to look at what's optimal for our staff in order to function efficiently and be able to produce the type of quality work that the, and the board, the committee wants from us, so.
Thank you.
Is that one more request?
Sure.
When you do the December 20th presentation, could you please put a slide in about the equity index and what criteria you use for the equity index? Thanks.
Move on to good news.
Okay, okay, in the interest of time, I'm going to share this really quickly. I didn't want to put up a graphic around this item, but I didn't want people to misinterpret without having the full context, so I'll be brief. There's an article, I think it was last week or two weeks ago, in the New York, New York Times, and it had to do with school performance. And there was some research that started out of looking at Chicago schools who were very severely underserved. And the premise was how to evaluate progress than the traditional norm where you do standardized tests and what I, what I've always called added value. You know, you might have a student who's performing at 20% and he moves to 40%, but the standard is 70% and you say he's still below standard, but he's moved like 30% in one, in one year. That's significant. So they've done some, some, some metrics in order to do this analysis across the nation. And they've also brought in income as a variable. And the good news I wanted to share was, on this list, Burlington School District ranked the 92nd in the percentile and put all those variables in in terms of what they call over, growth after five years, which I call added value. So it's not just looking at standardized. So that was, I think that was a good news piece for us in terms of, we've got some really good foundation in terms of the work that's happened and there is progress that's happened in our district. And we just need to grab some of those good things that we're doing and crystallize it as we look to close the achievement gap and, and raise the bar for all our students moving forward. So, I wanted to share that. I didn't want to put the, the graphic up in articles. I know people would see the graphic and make other assumptions and, you know, you have to kind of get the whole, read the whole article and get the picture, but I want to share that with the board and anyone else who was listening to kind of hear that, that bit of good news.
Can you make that available to us so we can-
I can, I can. Maybe I'll share the article even to you.
No, that'd be great.
Good news.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, we'll close you out at 8:08. Moving on to the consent agenda, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
移到
Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Curry seconded. Take it. All those in favor of the consent agenda as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Seeing none, passes. Thank you. I am now going to turn over number nine for the board monitoring of the superintendent-prepared reports to Commissioner Seguino. I'm just Commissioner, Commissioner Harrington, sorry.
We're in the way.
So, Superintendent O'Bang sent us the monitoring report a couple of days ago. Michael Healy said to us at our June retreat that the purpose of monitoring is that it helps us understand our agreements and how we are living up to our agreements. If you think about our policies as either directed, I mean, if you think of them as directives or we could think of them as agreements, we have made about the work that should be happening. And monitoring conversations should be about, do we think the work that's happening is the right kind of work to be happening? So I hope we can focus there and less on the procedure of what should, you know, what exactly should the motions be? That said, there are two decisions we have to make about the monitoring report. One is, do we think that Superintendent O'Bang's interpretation of the policy is a reasonable interpretation? And does the evidence, and then secondly, does the evidence pointed to in this report support that reasonable interpretation? A tertiary decision we could make is that perhaps we think this was a reasonable interpretation, but we wish to provide more precise guidance because we wish to say, well, that was reasonable, but it's not exactly what we want. So, a tertiary level of analysis is about, if, if we don't really like the reasonableness, if we don't like the reasonable interpretation, we might decide we need to change the policy, which obviously we wouldn't do on the fly tonight. But, you know, as we did with our own policy about consent agendas, we realized in the monitoring of it that we needed to change the policy. So, some other school districts do actually a wave of two motions about monitoring reports, one on the reasonableness and then a second one on the interpret, you know, on the interpretation. You know, it's, it's, as I mentioned last time, Bellingham actually just puts executive limitation reports in its consent agenda for one month and then discusses them the next month, although perhaps their super is not as efficient as ours is in getting the reports available in advance. It's also the case that probably the ends policies seem more exciting to discuss because, you know, they're, they're like about actively doing things, not about the avoidance of behaviors. But I think I would suggest we start by discussing the interpretation of this policy. Do we think the way that the superintendent has interpreted this policy is a reasonable way to do that?
So I went through every word of this because I had a feeling that you were going to do a Susan Marie and-
And expect that you'd read it.
Do a drill down on it.
Yes.
So I did. I went, I went through every single bit of this, right? And I did look at the reasonableness. And quite frankly, when you go through this, you see what we've gone through for three years. We are written all over this from the last time around, right? I mean, all the safety mechanisms that are in there and so on that, that are just like a lessons learned from, you know, four years ago, right? So as to the reason, as to the reasonableness of these, I would like to see us go through a year or so of compiling these thoughts, right? And if there's, there's not a reasonableness at that time because we've built in budgetary controls, which actually take away some of the discretion of the superintendent, maybe we don't have to, maybe they're not reasonable any longer, right? So from the reasonable side of things, I concur that I would like to see these, these things stay in until we go through maybe a year cycle and then these can be reviewed again the next time around. As to the interpretation, I think his wording of the interpretations is, in some cases, just personalizing the tense of what our direction was. So it takes away a lot of discretion, actually, to where we could, you know, it's not, it's hard to say that's not what we meant when he's saying back to us what we said and just personalizing it to himself, having, being obligated to deliver. So that's my, that's my thoughts.
Did you mean with reasonableness? I got confused by your, your comment about- I understand what you're saying, that if budgetary controls become institutionalized, then that's just becomes part of the way we do business-
That's correct.
So may not be-
That's correct.
-necessarily in the limitations anymore.
Right.
I got lost in what you said about reasonableness, the distinction you were making.
So the reasonableness was the limitation itself. Is that, is the, is the limitation itself-
Oh, I see.
-reasonable?
Okay, gotcha.
So, we know why-
Yep.
-so many of these are here.
Yes, right.
This is our history.
Yes, got it.
Right?
Yeah, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, thanks.
And certainly, it's just my ideas. It's just, but. So, any further discussion on reasonableness of the limitations?
Of the interpretation of, his interpretation of-
The interpretation. Commissioner Curry.
I just want to say that with this one, I think this is really clear. I mean, it's kind of cut and dry, so-
It's the easiest one.
It's the easiest one. I think it's a good example of both, both a standard that we want to set and like a And then it's pretty clear, like, that it can be embedded in, it can be institutionalized. But some of those softer, some of the softer criteria, I guess, in other policies, like, to me, this would be a good frame of reference to use for some of the softer policies, standards. So I just wanted to make the comment that this, to me, is like exemplifies a real, in both ways, both reasonableness and interpretation. It's really clear, it's really, all the evidence is there, it's really well documented, and it's really easy to follow. So, like, that's ideal. But, you know, I think we might want to spend more- So like, that's ideal, but you know, I think we might want to spend more time on the ones that aren't so cut and dry.
That's reasonable.
I knew that was coming.
Other questions?
I mean.
Come on, Commissioner Wick, I know you want to dig into this stuff on the money-wise. Come on.
Oh, this is impressive.
Okay.
I mean, given that there's, perhaps unsurprisingly, not a lot of concerns about whether there's a reasonable interpretation of the policy, many components of which don't have very many words in them in the first place, so you know, and we did, I think.
You did good.
I think we did a good job drafting policies in relatively plain language, which also, you know, promotes the shared, shared interpretation. So perhaps we could simply move to the question of the evidence that this points to, and when we get around to making a motion on compliance, we can do, you know, just do everything all at once here. When we were thinking of moving to policy governance, there were some concerns expressed both on and off the board about what it would mean if the board stopped having a standing finance committee. And this policy is the policy that directs the superintendent to not get us into financial jeopardy, which was certainly the job that the finance committee had been working on for a long time. So I think in monitoring this policy tonight, it's a good moment to, to stop and think about how we are in a position to monitor the financial health in this structure, you know, compared to the years in which it was happening inside the finance committee.
Except for he's using the minutes of the finance committee meetings as his evidence for, which is.
Well, we had a finance committee through.
Yeah, but I mean.
Oh, we got you.
Let's say we're all the finance committee now.
Well, yeah, exactly.
So.
Commissioner Curry.
I don't know if it's a motion, but I would just.
So let, and we can further on discuss.
Say we would just, let's accept the report.
Can I have a second? She made the motion. Can I have a second? We'll get to it. Commissioner Kleeman, discussion now. So this is, what's on the table right now is a motion to accept the monitoring report as compliant, as is, as in compliance, as to the claim by the superintendent. Discussion.
Well, I really am curious whether people feel comfortable with the way the financial information is flowing.
Fair enough. No. Fair enough. So this is a, Commissioner Wick.
I still would like to feel as though we better understand the budget, and then the question as to whether we need a finance committee is one we should discuss further. I feel a little disconnected, and maybe that's the nature of policy governance, but disconnected from one of our core functions, which is direct oversight of the, of the money. I'm not sure where I, I fall on that yet. I'm still a little uneasy that we don't ever discuss the finances in any detail, and I'm very impressed with this, and clearly the indicators are positive that with these nine criteria, we're, we're doing well, and Nathan just showed us that we've, yet another year of $1.1 million surplus. That's great news, too. So I'm not complaining, I'm just still trying to square this lack of us having any handle on the, personal handle on any of the finances.
Commissioner Barlow.
I'm comfortable with this. I guess maybe I sat on the finance committee, and one of the issues I always had there was, there was a group of four or five of us who got the information that you're asking for, Jeff, and now we all get it, and I think we all need to have it to deliberate on it. And so, I mean, maybe we're getting a little bit tangential here, but I think this monitoring report is very good, and I concur with Commissioner Curry's assessment. This is one of the easier ones, right? We have these criteria, that these nine criteria didn't just fall out either. We, we met, I think, on two or three different occasions to hammer these out, and it's supported by, the evidence is supported by an independent third-party audit, you know, and these sorts of things. So I think this is, this is, this is good, and I don't, I don't have any issue with it. So I wouldn't take lack of discussion as a misunderstanding of.
Commissioner Curry.
And so Commissioner Wick, I can understand that, that feeling of being a little, like, you know, just distant from the information because you're new on the board and it takes years to understand the budget. I think also that the, that it's important to make a distinction between overseeing the money, which we don't oversee the money, we hire a superintendent to oversee the money, but we have a fiduciary responsibility to ask the right questions that allow us to, you know, determine or judge the, that, you know, implement, you know.
Yeah, I got you.
Fulfill that responsibility.
Yeah.
So there is a very detailed budget available, the format that, you know, Nathan made available last year, and that's easy enough to roll up and roll, and unroll as well. I know Commissioner Barlow and I have been repeatedly kind of hoping that we'll move in the direction of the open data that the city uses, so that's a desire. There's probably more capacity in munis, is it munis?
Mm-hmm.
Software? To get to a point where we would have, you know, a more, a more budget, an organized budget that look, could be, look more like the city's budget, and, and that's been a conversation on the table in terms of the office's capacity to do that. So just to give you some background, we've been, we've come a long way, and then we were able to get to that line item budget last year. That was a first because many items weren't even captured in the right place in the right accounts. There were duplicate accounts, there were cross postings of stuff that wasn't even visible, so there was still a lot of sorting out to be done. But, but just also be clear about, we don't oversee the money. We hire the superintendent and then evaluate the superintendent on how he or she manages the money as part of their job, so.
Anyone else? Commissioner Clare.
I appreciate, Liz, the distinction between sort of the, the budgeting aspect of it and then the management of the budget. I think I share some of Commissioner Wick's distance from the budget and likely because of my newness to the board. The only sort of tension I have in this, and I feel like the policies are specific and the interpretation is more than reasonable, there's not a lot of wiggle room in how the policies are written to interpret them differently, as has been said. I guess in the event of non-compliance, my concern is not knowing until this time next year. Some of them, some of the, some of the policies are about things that, like for payroll. I mean, as is mentioned, it happened, there's eight different payroll cycles, eight to 10 times per month over five different payroll groups, and if for whatever reason that is settled in an untimely manner, I think I'd want to know more than annually. But that doesn't feel like it requires a finance committee to, to manage, but that's, I guess that's my only thought.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirk.
I kind of agree that we have a certain disconnect now, now that we've gone policy governance to information. I felt that with the, with, having committee reports monthly, that we could sometimes flag things that we would see. If, when Miriam was on the finance committee, if we had an ongoing issue, we could bring that to the top of the table a lot quicker than having to report once a month. I absolutely understand the disconnect. It's been a transition I don't know that I've been totally comfortable with myself. But that being said, I, again, I don't think we're going in a wrong direction. I think we're doing, you're, you're doing the right things, but I still feel a little disconnected from the information sometimes, you know, with the way we spend money and the way we, we are doing things.
So, you know, I want to make clear, this report, this monitoring report does not supplant the financial reports. I don't know why there's a feeling towards that at all.
I'm not just talking about the financial reports, though. I'm talking about everything. I mean, we dissolved the ITC, so we dissolved all of our committees, and we used to get a lot of monitoring with the exception of DNE.
And we can certainly do that, David. We can bring those, those are the items, if you see things missing, such as the, a very good example is the monthly financial reports that are in there every single month, the cash flow report and all that. That was the stuff that was reviewed at the finance committee meeting. So that's provided, that is still provided every single month, and if you want to discuss it, you can say, we need to pull this, and that's why I asked the question in the beginning. I'm not saying you're, you're wrong at all. I just want to make sure that you understand that the govern, the policy governance monitoring reports tell him he won't do something, okay? But that does not supplant the flow of information that you need. So those finance reports are up there, and, and if there's, hey, we need to have another monthly report, has nothing to do with the monitoring reports. There's nothing else that you want to have added to the consent agenda? Add it. If you want something more current on, I'm gonna give you an example because you picked on ITC. If you wanted something more current on the expenditures of the, the bond issue, I'm gonna say quarterly or whatever, you know, so whatever you might come up with, Dave, right? So stuff that you would see before, just let them know. That doesn't have to be in policy governance. That can certainly be a consent agenda item that you could say, hey, that's fine, or I got a question on it. So I don't want you to feel like it's, it's removing you from that availability of information because we, we don't want to go there. That's not what we wanted anyways. I agree with you. Commissioner Olow.
No, go ahead. I just wanted him to see.
Oh, all right. I mean, I was never on the finance committee, so I, I actually, I mean, I actually feel like the, some of the financial information now flows to me more conveniently than it did when I, when we had a finance committee that I wasn't on, because now the finance reports are coming to the meetings I'm coming to. I don't have to look at agendas for things I'm not going, wasn't necessarily going to. But I'm wondering whether, if we have time to do a moment of reflection once we finish discussing this motion, whether we might, I mean, I guess if I were ever a school board chair, I might think maybe we need to do some kind of board member orientation to sort of think about, how do you bring people in and orient to budget issues? Because when people start on the board, the work does not stop to let people have a month to catch up, right? The work just keeps going on. So there's that. Secondly, maybe we want to ask the superintendent to do some orientation for all of us about how to read the financial reports that are going in, so that we could figure out whether, how do we read them, so that we might notice things going awry that we, you know, like, so that sense, because the, you know, so there might be some things we could do to ask, how do we use our time so that people don't necessarily feel disconnected? It is not uncommon for school boards around the country to have the kind of financial reports we get in their consent agendas. Like what we are doing with our finance monitoring is not out of step with other boards. Of course, if my mother were still alive, she would say, if everyone else jumped off the Brooklyn Bridge, would you do it, too? The answer was clearly, oh, it's supposed to be no. So, you know, I mean, but so that, that we are in step with other people does not necessarily make it right, but it certainly means it's not necessarily a cause for alarm, you know, so.
Let me move on to Commissioner Olow, and that's the last one we're gonna take on this one.
I just wanted to say
Because we have to just move on.
In the last couple of months, I have talked to a neighbor who used to be on Essex School Board and as superintendent from South Burlington, both of which said to me, what, you have no committees? And they are both doing policy governance and love it, but they all had committees as part of their board. So, I mean, I don't know why we did away with them all, but it isn't unheard of to have committees with, with policy governance.
Steve, that thought for when we monitor our policy on committees, which is coming up. Yes, so.
All right. So I'm gonna ask to call a question on this one, just because we have more to cover, plus an executive session which could drive late. So we have an existing motion, and it was seconded to accept as in compliance, the monitoring report of the superintendent, 2.3 Financial Conditioned Activities. All those in favor of motion as stated, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
I have a quick comment on the, the, just, just quickly, just trying to remind people that.
You like everybody else, you're gonna be quick on this one.
Just trying to remind everyone that this is a continuous process. We're just, you know, we're months into this, and there's opportunities to continue to have the conversation and get it right. I still remember the board members, when we were in one of the training sessions, that we asked a question, when do you finish policy governance? And they had been in it for five years, and they said, well, we'll never finish. You continue, it's continuous development, right, until you get it right. And I also would comment, thank you for the comments on the report. I say that when you receive a report and you're satisfied with it, that's not only a compliment to us, that's really to you, that you gave clear direction so we could give you the responses that you needed, so.
Commissioner Harrington. Moving on to the next one.
Moving on. Oh.
Board monitoring of its own policies. Thanks, Nate.
So this is the, this was the policy, Policy 4.2 on the board job description, which was on our agenda for last month, and we were too tired to carry out serious attention to it, so we decided to pause the discussion. Thanks to Brittany for reprinting the graphs. I also emailed them to you again earlier.
Thanks.
And Brittany, maybe could you put Policy 4.2 up there?
Just the policy.
Yeah. Can you make it a little bigger?
You can just let me know when you want me to scroll down.
Perfect, yeah. All right. So what the graphs show you, it's been a while, many things have happened since we took the survey, but the orange on the graphs is fully in compliance, and red on the graphs is mostly in compliance. And I, the survey that we took before the last board meeting simply took every single component of Policy 4.2 and asked, to what degree are we in compliance with this? And you can see there's, you know, range of view, I mean, the good news is on every component of the policy, over half, most of us thought we were mostly or fully in compliance with, with this policy. But I think that, to take a step back, and again, to think about Michael Healy's admonition that the point here is to think about, are we honoring our commitment? This policy is about defining the, the responsibilities of the board, and I think the slight variation in response here is interesting because it suggests there's some variation in opinion here about, are we doing the things that we said we would be responsible for doing? And are we doing what we think we should be doing? And if we're not, what's the obstacle to doing it better? Or what should we be doing more of? What should we be doing less of? So I, I think that's the question. I, I think here it's less important to talk about interpretation of the policy and the evidence for the policy, because we know more about what's in our own heads about how we're interpreting the policy. We, we're not so much in the superintendent's heads. So Michael did advise me that you think about interpretation and evidence a little bit differently when you're monitoring yourself versus when you're asking someone else to report to you about work that you weren't there for, so.
So, oh.
What percent of us replied?
10 out of 11, so, yes.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Yes, yes.
So this was, this was a very personal reflection on myself on this one, right? So I had to think, you know, am I educating the community on issues of impact on the district? And I know it says, do you think the board is? I can't really speak for everybody on this one. I had to look at myself and say, am I attending all the meetings I should attend to? Am I publicizing everything on front porch form if I'm, am I? attend to? Am I publicizing everything on front porch form? If I'm... am I... you know, can you always do more? Of course you can do more." But I think certainly the negotiations have pulled back my availability from going out and attending the meetings that I'd like to make. And now we're in the budget cycle, which pulls me back again. So in most of these things, wherever it says, "Do you think the board is?" I was actually looking at, "Do you think Mark is?" And I looked at these things. So I don't... I'm not sure if I put things as not in compliance or mostly. I think... I think I did mostly, to tell you the truth. I didn't wave the flag saying I'm just awesome and fully in compliance because I wasn't attending all the meetings that I thought I could. I don't know how you guys felt.
So I think for, like, Policy 4.2, too, I wrote not in compliance or mostly in... I don't even remember what I wrote. But if I wrote not in compliance, which I'm sure I did for at least one of these, I didn't respond as a reflection of a failure. I responded as a reflection of, like, just not having the ingredients that would actually lead to full compliance, just because of the... where we are in terms of the amount of work that we're trying to manage. Like, with, you know, all the contract negotiations and all the stuff going on, that's just made the work that much harder and it's made it that much harder to get out to meetings. But it certainly... it was a good way... it was a good reminder for me, like, just having this policy and reading that we had set this goal for ourselves made me more pay attention to it. And so then I did start, like, I started being more proactive about reaching out. And that's why I volunteered to be the PTO liaison. So, like, I started thinking more about, "Okay, well then, how can I come into compliance with this?" And I, like, set up a meeting with a few of my neighbors who are, you know, my constituents. I reached out to a couple of people personally. I reached out to a couple organizations personally. So it just... I thought that was really the best purpose or outcome of having a policy like this was just, like, remembering that with policy governance, this is the kind of responsibility that comes with that. So I remembered, like, I don't have to go to two committee meetings a month. Instead, I can, you know, take the initiative to reach out. So to me, like, just because we're not in compliance doesn't mean that's a bad thing. It's just a good reflection.
The two places... I mean, you know, I mean, it's a small N here. So the, you know, there were on Policy 2.2B and 2.2C, which are the two bottom graphs on the first page, there were three people who thought we... well, yeah, three people each who thought we were not in compliance with things that had to do with creating and maintaining the linkage between the community and the district administration. And so I... I was curious whether people... I mean, like Liz, you and Mark are talking about this on a personal level, like, you know, how much initiative am I able to take or should I take or might I take in the future about connecting with constituents? And I'm wondering whether other people were thinking about this on an individual level or whether there's a desire as we create our, you know, early 2018 calendar to do some other kind of community engagement work. One of the things that the D and E committee had talked about was doing a board training around achievement gap issues. And that's one of the things we'll be discussing at our meeting on the 19th. But it had also come up at an earlier D and E meeting that perhaps we should have more of a community event on that score rather than simply a training for the board. But to try to either perhaps... not clear whether it was a substitute for or in addition to some kind of more community educational event. So I'm just curious whether people see some of the blue on the bottom as an indicator that perhaps we should try to schedule a different kind of thing? I mean, because really, since I've been on the board, we've never done a "let us teach you about an issue" kind of presentation beyond the, here's where with the budget.
Commissioner Swin.
That was the original idea, was that the achievement gap would be a public event, not just for the board, precisely because the board, the district is moving in the direction of addressing this. And so many people don't really understand what that's about. So that was the original intent. And the idea was that would be... that would be the board's community event as compared to the D and E committee's community event.
Commissioner Clemon.
In response to your question, I kind of did a little bit of both. I took it as a personal challenge, you know, what am I doing? Where have I fallen down? And what can... where should I be thinking? What should I be thinking of doing? And also, more holistically, looking at what have we heard from community members in general? And is there a disconnect between what people think they know and the reality? And I think there is a little bit of both in there, this kind of mixture of not having enough information to make decisions or to understand for some people or to make decisions. So a little bit of both.
Commissioner McLaren, then Commissioner Curry.
I would just second that. I mean, I think I answered mostly personally, like, "Am I doing..." Meeting the job description adequately. And also, are... is the board able to communicate with our community in a way where there's either a real or perceived linkage? And both could be improved.
Commissioner Curry.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to... I didn't want to cut off the discussion. I was just going to make a motion to accept the...
There's nothing to... you need to make a motion.
There's nothing to move.
Yeah. I mean, like, you can't... there's nothing to accept, so you need to make a motion that we are in compliance or mostly in compliance or whatever, like...
That's right. I'll second that motion.
Someone needs to... well, but what is she wanting to move?
There's a discussion now. So it's been seconded. So the motion... so you didn't hear it.
Okay.
The motion is mostly in compliance.
Okay.
Commissioner Barlow.
So my comment is a follow-on from the discussion we were just having. Is appropriate still?
Of course.
Now that there's a motion, okay. So I took this to mean, I didn't look... take it, like, personally. I looked at it as our institution, the board. And I just sort of thought, and I think some have sort of alluded to this as well, that we're sort of in transition from the way we were to the way we're trying to become. So it's somewhat aspirational still. And so for that reason, we're not fully in compliant because we're still sort of on this transitional curve. So that's why... I didn't vote we were out of compliance or anything because I think we're trying on a lot of these things. But I think we're not fully in compliant. If we're not fully in compliant, that's why.
That's what we're saying. Okay. So the motion sta... any further discussion? The motion stands to accept this... I'm sorry, to declare we are or accept this as mostly in compliance, which would be the reds. Okay? So if everybody's looking at the little colors on this thing, it'd be the reds. And you can see the predominance of it. All those in favor... all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Okay. We accept it as mostly in compliance.
Let me catch who made the motion in the second.
Commissioner... Commissioner Curry made the first. I made the second.
Okay, thank you.
So can I ask a, like, follow-up question now that we've just decided mostly in compliance? Is there a sense that we're mostly in... like, Mark just said, we're mostly... Mark B., sorry. Like, we're mostly in compliance because we're in a transitional period and we're moving ahead. And it kind of makes sense that we're mostly in compliance. There could be a sense that... I mean, not everybody has spoken, so I don't know whether some people think we're mostly in compliance and kind of in need of some sort of remediation or, you know, like, do we need to do anything differently? Or are we feeling like, "Okay, we're... we'll get there." And hopefully, in another year, when this policy comes around again, people at the table will be able to say, "Yeah."
I think it would be very fair to let this come around again. We all know how to do this. We've been doing it for years, right? But time-wise, it's just been... just been taking a toll on our availability to accomplish this. So I'd like to see us come back around and probably... probably in the... in the springtime, just remind us that this is something that comes up in December and say, "Hey, does anybody have any questions on this?" So we could probably just revisit it as a topic of discussion.
I would like to see a track for, like, if we do a board retreat, like, so you were saying we formalize a community meeting, you know, we formalize an educational issue for the community. I'd like to see that included proactively in our goals.
So that's a good idea. So maybe at the board retreat, we'll develop a plan for compliance.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to the review and evaluate this meeting. Like, everybody just tried to keep it to a minute if they could because I know I can see eyes getting droopy. I have so much work to do. Commissioner Clemon.
Worst meeting ever. No, I... aside from it starting an hour before I got off work, it was really... it was good. I mean, I think we actually made some progress on some things.
Commissioner Harrington. I'm sorry. Commissioner Harrington.
I think we're... I think we're getting there. I mean, I hope that eventually we get to the point where we can problem solve. If enough people are feeling disconnected from any particular issues, we should figure out how to... I mean, we can... the whole point of constant reflection is change. That shouldn't need to wait a year. So... but I'm feeling like we're moving in the right direction.
Commissioner Olwell.
I'm with you on the reflection or, you know, problem solving and more discussion, but otherwise it was fine, maybe.
Commissioner McLaren.
Good.
Good. Love that. Commissioner Seguino.
Two things. One is that I think that although more discussion might be desirable, the reality is that there's so much to do and we probably should consider two meetings a month. Number two, I think it's problematic that Joe has been here for almost three hours and that we should better plan around executive sessions. No blame, but just observing that we want to do that better. And Joe doesn't...
Your turn.
Deserve to have to sit here.
Commissioner Curry.
I just want to say I really appreciate the senior directors' presentations that we've been hearing. And I appreciate the honesty with which they've shared, you know, that we just don't have enough resources to meet needs. And it's just good to see their expertise and the way they approach difficult challenges. Thank you.
I thought it was a good meeting. It went smoothly. We didn't... nobody talked too much. One thing that I just, on a personal level, I really... for board discussion, I really wanted to correct the statement that we hadn't... with the criticism that we hadn't signed... completed the contract, wanted to say, "Well, we've done our part and we're waiting." But I felt like that was critical... was being critical. And I... that's just something that I have to decide whether or not to... to correct public statements.
Commissioner Barlow.
I concur with Commissioner Seguino that I think these things are best, personally, if we keep them to, like, three hours max. I think we lose a lot of the public after the second hour and not... you know, it's nice to have them here to hear us deliberate. I also think that people get tired. And I also agree, think that we should maybe move to two meetings a month. We've... I think we've had a meeting every week this month or for the last several weeks anyway. So I think that that's maybe also something we should consider.
Commissioner Wick.
I really appreciate the new focus on learning section of our agenda. I think it's incredibly helpful to me to get a real, in-the-trenches view from the senior directors as to what's going on. And I can't wait for more. And I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Kirk.
I thought the meeting was fine. I do agree, though, that I think two meetings would help get the information out a little easier. Because come tonight at 11 o'clock, when we're still in meeting tonight, we're all going to be a little punchy and not really using our best efforts because we're probably going to all be thinking how comfortable our bed will be. So two meetings a month will help facilitate things like having Joe sit here for an extended period of time, wait for us. Thanks, Joe. But, you know.
Isaac, who has to go to school tomorrow?
Yeah. Well, I think that this is not necessarily about this meeting, but I just want to clarify at some point with the multiple meetings we've had throughout this month and meetings, like special board meetings, just having a better sense of when would be in a... like, which meetings would be appropriate to come to and which wouldn't because if it's just going to go to executive session, then...
Good point.
Don't come.
Good point. Thank you. So we will close out the review and evaluate the meeting, move on to the future agenda item suggestions. So I'm still carrying the staff and student ratios, the Holcomb numbers, the board review of 4.1 for board governance. Susan Marie?
Board governance 4.1, we haven't done yet, I don't think. From leftover from...
Correct. 4.1 we haven't done yet, and 3.1 and 4.6 we haven't done yet.
Okay.
But 4.1 is also later on the calendar for March. So I was going to suggest doing 3.1 and 4.6...
Next time?
In January and leaving 4.1 in March.
Right. Superintendent, also the 2018 scheduling. Do you want to give us the progress as to how things went for percentage of students that couldn't get classes or whatever matrix?
Student scheduling analysis.
Yes. We will close out... well, it'll be closed out this month will be the audit results. We will be closing out the superintendent evaluation. We'll be closing out the teacher-student demographics because between last month and this month, we've got them. We still have the impact of splits... splitting the double blocks at the high school to discuss, the impact, if any, of teacher loss at Burlington High School, the contract award criteria for the facilities. Remember, we talked about what people wanting to have certain criteria in there. And it really freaked me out. As far as you said, that we want to talk about twice monthly board meetings, and I already had it on the future board meeting. So I don't know how you guys were doing that. But I'd like to get that on the January board meeting where we talk about doing twice monthly board meetings. That way, they're regular meetings, cuts out the... hopefully, the necessity for a special meeting, cuts out the necessity for anything emergency. And certainly, we should cut down time, right? But we just have to decide as to when do we want on the consent agenda, the finance reports, do we want them the first meeting, the second meeting? How do you want to split that up so we can bring down the time needed on both of them? Okay? So I think we'll have that for a discussion in the January meeting. Commissioner Barlow, if you'll help me devise the base plan on that and how we could make that happen for January, just for the discussion in January, then we can say, "Okay, so how does people feel about it?" Is that okay?
Sure.
The man. So that's what I had for the pending agenda items. We are still in the regular board meeting. Can I have a motion to consider executive session to discuss contract negotiations where premature disclosure to the public could put the district at a disadvantage and possible contract ratification vote? And a motion to discuss personnel matter? We can combine these into a single vote. We've been told that before, right? Can I have a first? Commissioner Kirk, can I have a second? Commissioner McLaren, any discussion? All those in favor of entering... oh, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Just to be more clear for the record, I think it would be helpful if you articulated that we're going into executive session to discuss agreements with AFSCME, including property services, IT, food services, and bus services, with regard to the paraprofessionals, the negotiations with the BEA, and with regard to the teachers, the negotiations with the BEA, and the personnel matter relates to the superintendent's contract.
Thank you, everyone.